This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Great. Do you call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for September 27, 2022? Could we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Greetings, everyone. We have a little mini crowd tonight. That's good. All right. Do we have open time for the public? Anybody here for something that is not on the agenda that has a word to say? If not, hearing none, we will move on. We don't have any public hearings tonight, and we have the main presentation, which is the Public Safety Building Committee presentation of its RFQ. And I gather this will be a joint meeting, so if you have a quorum, you want to call it to order, Sarah?
Yeah, upstairs at 5:30, you can call it to order there.
Okay, come up to the mic. Yeah, yeah, thanks. Just introduce yourself and say that all again.
Sarah Stein, Nine Gold Spring Road, Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee. We did call our meeting to order at 5:30. We met briefly upstairs just to touch base before we met here. I do have this electronically, if you'd like me to pull it up, or I believe there's hard copies, whichever is...
We just got the hard copy, so it may be easier, given that we've got other people here. If we can hook you up, I don't know.
Okay.
We just got to put in the coordinates there. Got to connect to the room Wi-Fi, so...
And then it'll be right there? Oh, it's... okay.
Yeah, right here. It should be the main thing. It'll be easier for people.
So, connect to Southampton?
Yeah, the Wi-Fi key.
Oh.
Once you've done that, open your browser.
Uh, okay. And then type the room name in?
Yes. Well, not the room name, the actual...
Whatever it says up there.
The IP address, actually. Just, I think, down here. Try to get your browser. Then put in that room code. Up at the crane, and then it's entire screen, and... Out of the green. And click on entire screen. Share.
It has "cancel" as the highlighted one, isn't that funny?
Yeah. And if I'm only going to share from the entire screen, go to the windows.
So, sharing a window.
You know what? The room code has changed.
Okay. Why don't we just do it without it? We can just follow along in the written copy. That's fine, because we won't... What we ought to do in the future, maybe, is just jump into that television mode and use that other screen. Might be easier than connecting here. Why don't we just do it off the paper, Sarah? Go ahead. We can follow.
Give her 30 seconds.
Well, if she... if it's that close. Oh, all right. Okay. Okay, all right. So, Sarah, go for it. It's all yours.
So, this is an RFQ for feasibility study. So, what it is, is it's a request for qualifications for a feasibility study. So, we're looking for firms to give us a proposal to put together a feasibility study for a public safety complex. So, that's kind of what we're putting out here to look for firms to come back with. The dates, we've plugged in what kind of we're targeting, but these will be set finalized by Ed as we... once we get this out here, hopefully in the next week.
Can you make that a one-pager so that it's not...
Can we go like that?
Yeah, there you go. Perfect.
So, do you want me to go ahead and read through every line? Do you want me to just hit some of the...
No, we'll be here till midnight. No, I think, just the highlights of the kinds of features and things that you're putting in there. Just summarize some of these things, the requirements and things like that.
Introduction is pretty simple. You know, the designer who we're referring to in here is the architectural or engineering firm chosen to perform the work of the feasibility study. It's, you know, a selection of a designer to conduct a feasibility study for the construction of a new public safety complex in town. Submission instructions, these are pretty standard. These actually came almost straight from the senior center feasibility study. Select Board is the awarding authority.
The maximum amount here you put in was, what, 75?
75. And that is what we applied for, for ARPA funds, which we granted. And we're targeting, just to go back to that, we are targeting the feasibility study to be completed by April 3, with the hope to get this on the agenda for town meeting in the spring, in terms of having a budget for a public safety complex by May. You know, if we have the feasibility study, which will include a budget completed by April 3. That's what we're moving towards right now. Submission requirements, this is what we're looking for. You know, a bare minimum to submit, the designer, which is either an architectural or engineering firm, needs to have, they must have been in business for 10 years, Massachusetts Registered Architect or Engineer, with 10 years' experience in public safety building complex, either a building or a complex, designing, construction, and experience with at least five public safety building or complex feasibility studies or design projects within the last 15 years. A lot of these things that they have to submit are pretty standard, insurance and such, confirmation they haven't filed for bankruptcy. Again, a lot of these standard things came from the senior center RFQ.
Just a quick question on the one on the acknowledgement that it has sufficient resources. Does that mean you want them to upfront it all and then get paid later? Or what does that mean?
That means staffing was what we intended there, that they are available. And maybe we need to clarify that. But acknowledgement they have sufficient resources to complete the study by April 3. The way I read was intending that was...
Personnel.
Personnel, that they can complete, you know, that schedule. Because it's somewhat aggressive, you know, timeline-wise. So, that's really more where that came from.
Gotcha.
We have a procurement schedule in here, these dates, some of which are otherwise. Ed will, you know, determine when the RFQ is available based on when it can be posted, and then the qualifications will be due one month after that. So, some of these earlier dates may shift, or hoping only a couple days, but... And then interviews, if deemed to be necessary, with the selected firms, two or three potentially. And then our committee will submit a recommendation to the Select Board, with the hope then, if, you know, we submit a recommendation by early December, a week and a half later, so the contract could be executed. Background and existing conditions here. We speak to the fact that two town-owned properties and multiple privately-owned properties have been evaluated and selected by the Public Safety Building Committee and approved by the Select Board for evaluation for a public safety complex. We speak to who the committee is composed of. We do have a sentence in here just stating that a previous feasibility study for a public safety complex was completed in 2015 and did not move forward at that time, and that this study is available on the town of Southampton webpage for reference. So, that's just partially to bring everyone to somewhat of an even playing field, if some firms know about that and some don't. So, the way we broke down the scope of work was into tasks. So, I'll run through those now. The first task is a space needs assessment. So, this is meeting with the emergency department heads and the committee, and going through what, you know, they would recommend is needed for space for this facility, given the population of the town and growth projections for the town. We'd be looking for them to prepare a report summarizing space needs of all the emergency departments, including, you know, all the functions and all the needs for square footage for vehicles, apparatus, personnel, visitors, and other. We have removed any language speaking to community space within the public safety complex. That was something that had been included at one point, but we're looking at these more truly as just the fire department and police department needs.
And communications.
And communications. So, after site assessment, or after space needs assessment, the next step would be site evaluation. So, we've included up to five properties. This is the two town-owned properties, and three privately-owned properties, the three who've engaged at this point. So, what we're looking for is a preliminary site evaluation of these three properties, or of these five properties. That will then be presented, a written report confirming the adequacy of the sites considered, and a site analysis matrix will be created. So, our intention is after this, after Task 1 and 2 are completed, we would bring that information back to the Select Board and go down to one property. The hope would be, you know, we're not going to do a schematic design for multiple properties. So, after the site evaluation is completed, we'd bring that, you know, we as a committee would meet and take that information and then present it to the Select Board, and hopefully, one property comes to the front. So, that's kind of states that here. Task 3 is a schematic design plan. After Task 2 is completed, the Public Safety Building Committee and the Select Board will narrow site selection to one property, and then Task 3 will include the development of a preliminary design drawings, focus on site plan, building plans fitted to the proposed site, furnishing plans, exterior evaluations, and a preliminary building system. Sorry, I need to run my water. Task 4 is total project cost estimate, as well as a preliminary construction schedule. Task 5 is projected operating costs. And then Task 6, we added, is options for green design. We're not looking for these elements, potential green energy, on-site stormwater, potentially solar, things like that. We're not looking for those to be included in the base budget, but we would like to be given a list to be treated, kind of as a shopping list alternatives, to have that information. And then Task 7 is an evaluation of existing facilities in comparison to other communities.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, great.
What's the point of Task 7?
The point of Task 7 is the intent is to demonstrate the need for a new facility and educate the public on current conditions. That's... we added that last sentence. So, the final, Task 8, just to jump to that, is about presentations and reports, and so Task 7 would be incorporated to that final report, and presentations to the town, just to educate people about the need, really. So, Task 8 is a comprehensive final report and presentations. We ask for three presentations, including town meeting, and then the consultant should also anticipate attending five meetings with the committee and/or the public. So, that's kind of the... I mean, I'm going to keep going. There's more to this in terms of qualifications, but any thoughts on, any questions on the tasks?
I just have a question for the other Select Board members, actually, because the thing that's different about this from the other senior center one is this RFQ asks the firm to come down to one site. And I'm trying to think of the sequence of Select Board approval, town meeting vote, if it involves, for example, accepting a donation or sale of another property. So, we're going to move ahead with the feasibility study on one site without knowing where the vote would land. You said come to the Select Board, but I guess this might be a question for Ed. Are there any concerns that you might have about the feasibility study moving forward with one site and up to three schematic designs on one particular site? Or is it better or safer to say one town-owned, one private? Are you concerned about the timing of this relative to the town going forward on one particular site and then the town not supporting that?
Well, let's just say it's tight to get it to the May Town Meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, a little bit concerned about that. I mean, if there's a definite clear winner as far as the site goes, I'm in full support of moving forward with one rather than having multiples and make it confusing.
Okay.
Can I ask a question regarding that? So, if you just, whether, I mean, if it's a town property that's selected, then there's really no issue. But if it's a private owner property, will there be simultaneous negotiations going on to make sure that the site that they selected is still available for us to purchase?
Yeah, I think there will need to be, and that's something...
It's along what she said, a little bit. It's along the same lines as Reenie, but trying to figure out how do we get there in the short of time.
Yeah, that's something we were actually just talking about just before this, is, you know, how with the senior center, potential, you know, new senior center and potential new public safety complex, and in particular, when it comes to these properties, how the coordination will have to work with that. And I think it's something that still needs to be finalized and ironed out, to be honest. You know, what this firm would be responsible for is providing a recommendation exclusive of price. They wouldn't be taking that necessarily into account. You know, they would provide a matrix of pluses and minuses of the sites based on location, the site topography, things like that. And then I think we'd be looking at the Select Board for more direction on what the price of the land would be and how that factors into it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that people were okay with part 2 of the feasibility study would be focused on one site before town meeting approval for that particular site being considered.
Right. That's what we have here. We had at one point discussed having two schematic designs for two different sites, but we felt that that was potentially wasted effort. So, that's another option, is to go from 5 to 2, and then have two schematic designs done. And some of that work would be reutilized for the two different sites, but some is individual to the site. And maybe, it's hard to answer this question until we have Phase 1 done, because when we have, you know, Phase 1 done, maybe there's going to be a town-owned and a privately-owned that are on par, and maybe, like we said, one will rise to the top very clearly. So, I don't know. I mean, we... The intent with this was that, and maybe we need to make this more clear, that after Task 1 and 2, there's some degree of a pause. The firm isn't to go on to Task 3 until, you know, they get direction from the Public Safety Building Committee and in conjunction with the Select Board regarding the results of Tasks 1 and 2, particularly Task 2. So, we could give ourselves more options in here, but it gets a little more challenging with negotiating price based on how many sites they're going to have to do designs for. You know, if you're looking at a site that needs a retaining wall, I mean, there's things that have to be considered relatively early with different selected properties.
And with your timeline, Sarah, you've got the idea of executing the contract by somewhere in December, and then the work really begins right in January. So, Steps 1 and 2, I'm wondering if in the actual contract, then you'll have that laid out as timelines within the contract for each of these different tasks that you've laid out?
Yes. And maybe that's something worth adding to the RFQ, or maybe it's something in negotiations with the selected designer. But, you know, of the three or so months, about three months, they have to do all of these tasks. Is it one month for Task 1 and 2, and then two months for the following tasks? I suppose that's something, you know, if they submit and say they can do all of this in three months, we could then ask them what their intention was in terms of... There's obviously some time needed between Task 2 and 3, whether it's a week, two weeks. I would hope it's not too long, but this is... The timeline's aggressive, you know, in particular based on the current land situation. But part of that is, we're hoping to stay on track with the senior center.
And I guess I'm partly, and it may not make a difference, I'm just trying to think of, you know, if you're already into February, for example, when the site visit is going to take place or something. It's like, land in the wintertime may look very different than land at other times of the year, and I don't know, there might be some considerations that they, you know, may not necessarily think of or see at that point in time. I don't know. I guess I would caution you about locking yourselves in two... I mean, I know time is an issue, but I wouldn't lock yourselves in so tight with language that you're not allowing some flexibility if they can't get out there to do that at that time or something. I'm not sure how to really word that, but that could possibly be an issue. And I think the other thing that seems to me is different from the other one we looked at, the senior center one, is that you all haven't really defined how much or what kind of things you want as features, the minimum features that have to be there, right? Like, I don't know, a changing room, a dormitory, I don't know what, but anything like that. Has that been at least talked about, but you've chosen not to put it in the RFQ?
We haven't. We've talked about that, whether or not to include those items in the RFQ, but because, you know, a public safety center has maybe more general requirements than a senior center, we were looking for recommendations, and it would, that would be the initial meeting, is they would sit down with the chiefs in particular and see what they're looking for and, you know, have a conversation with the chiefs largely, as well as the committee, for what they're looking for.
Which you just said is also spelled out in here, that one of the tasks would be to sit down and go over that list.
Right.
So, whereas a senior center may have come up with some suggestions for one room for this, one room for this, definitely this, I think the decision is going to be collaboratively with a firm doing the feasibility study.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so that's just saying, you know, in consultation with all emergency department heads, conduct an independent analysis of the current and future space needs of the public safety agencies, including those that may be shared, such as the Emergency Operations Center.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anybody else? Questions, thoughts?
I just wasn't sure, because the whole feasibility parts beyond Part 2 zeros on one site. And I just want to make sure this, and it's different from the senior center, which basically said, here are the five sites, put them, you know, evaluate them all on these criteria, and then, I guess, the Select Board and senior center will come up with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. This is like, do that first, identify one place, and then do the study on the rest of it. I just want to make sure people were aware of that's a difference, if it mattered.
So, I guess just a question, with the senior center, when they do, they're going to do a schematic design for each property? Is that the intent?
I think they talked about, like, doing just a bubble design.
Just more of a floor plan.
Sort of like, you could go here, or here, or here, and it's going to be clear that this might be more wetlands, or this might be more whatever. But I think what they said is, we could probably eliminate a couple of the sites pretty quickly, and so then the zeroing into a smaller number.
Yeah. I guess the only thing I'd say is, I think a public safety complex will have a little more site work involved and a little less flexibility with site work than a senior center, just because of, you know, if we, hopefully, have a drive-through fire station, like, things like that just require, it's not just a parking lot in front of a building in terms of the site work.
I'm just trying to think, too, about what the townspeople would want to see, and there's a part of me that thinks that we should have them kind of, not limited to one, but just propose one or two sites that would be the best sites for this, so that people, because, you know, people don't want land taken out of the tax rolls. So, if it's town-owned land, that will be the big difference there. And so, if there was two sites that, you know, up to two sites. But I just wanted to make sure that other people up here wanted to, were aware that that was a difference between the two, and if it mattered.
Chris?
Yeah.
So, I'm okay if they're going to come back with one, because ultimately, we have to agree to it or not before they move on to the next stage. But I guess where my concerns come from is, when they get to Tap, what is it, Task 3 there, right above where you are, where they're going to meet with everybody?
So, that's, the space needs assessment's actually Task 1, but...
But, in consultation with all emergency department heads, which includes the Police Chief, Fire Chief, Ambulance Service Director, and Emergency Management, that's two people hold those four jobs.
Correct.
Right, so two people. And the committee, who are the non-emergency department heads, right? So, I guess when that list comes out, as I've said before publicly in meetings, I'm all in favor of, in essence, the two chiefs saying, here's everything in the world that we want. But my question is, what's required, and then what are nice to haves in a priority setting? Because I think it's going to come down to, especially if these two projects move ahead simultaneously, there's limited money. So, what do we need to meet the minimum requirements, and then how far up do we go to the Taj Mahal, right? And then my second feedback is, sorry, is if a non-town-owned property is selected, what are we going to do with the two buildings that are town-owned that are now going to become vacant?
That is a good question that we have...
I think as, just for feedback, as a taxpayer, I'm going to want to know the answer to that question before I cast a ballot. So, I think the general public's going to want to know that answer.
That's a good question. Based on what we're doing right now, I guess my question is, do you want an analysis and recommendations from a design firm of uses for that building? We start to get kind of off-topic at that point. You know, we're piling on to this design firm, what they can do for $75,000 in three months.
Yeah.
It's probably a bit much to ask right now. It's a valid question, but I don't know that we could ask that, you know, to be included in what they're looking for.
Or what's the, again, the bare bones?
Yeah.
Set aside historic purposes, which I know is a sensitive subject here. Based on the two buildings, you know, I mean, we're investing money in the town hall right now, and they're writing another $150,000, $125,000. We haven't invested any money in the fire station. So, if we vacate that space, is it safe to say we just need to demo it? What's the cost of the demo?
Yeah.
Just as a baseline, not to say we're going to do it.
Yeah.
But that, to me, that becomes part of this project going forward.
The Historical Commission did say that they will not be opposed or be against it being demolished.
The fire station.
But not the police station.
Not the police station, only the fire station?
Right. But again, I go back to the voters. Okay, so, you're not going to oppose it, but if we don't have the money to take it down, then it becomes a liability to the town, and it's, you know, it's just unanswered questions, but...
Kristina Mattson, I'm a member of the, oh, 40 Rattle Hill Road, I'm a member of the Historical Commission. I just want to clarify that the Historical Commission did not take a real vote on whether that building could be demolished, because a demolition delay request had not been put before us. What we agreed was, with the current committee, commission, none of us would object to it, but it's not an official decision. That would have to come before the commission if a demolition delay request was made.
Okay, per the bylaw, yeah. Yeah, okay. Yep. And I think, too, when we talk about, you know, presenting this to town meeting, now, I've, I guess I haven't been at a town meeting where we've had a lengthy presentation like this. I mean, we usually go through 30 articles and take up a lot of time. So, I guess my question is, whether we're talking about town meeting, obviously, we've got to get this before the town. So, is it more like a public hearing or a public information meeting, or several public information meetings, where the public can come and hear you guys and the, you know, the design process or whatever, in preparation for town meeting, right?
Yeah, town meeting be a summary vote or a summary...
Right. I mean, so that they're, you're not waiting until town meeting for, and maybe I misunderstood it, in terms of when the townspeople kind of get a clue of what's going on, that they're brought in earlier in the process.
Yeah, we had called for at least three presentations, including town meeting, you know, presentations to the, potentially, this, in this forum, potentially at a, you know, more of a announced public, it wouldn't be a public hearing, but an educational...
Information meeting.
Right. Maybe potentially at a bigger location. We hadn't got to those specific details, but we had included, we figured three presentations, one of which would be town meeting, and in theory, the other two would be before that, because town meeting would hopefully be the end of this feasibility study. Just stepping back to Task 1 in terms of the site or the space needs assessment, I think part of the reason we wanted this to go through a firm, a design firm, is because there is a certain, you know, minimum for, because these are safety departments, you know, there's minimums, and I think that there... I don't know, you know, maybe you guys know this better than I do, that there's, you know, state recommendations or federal recommendations.
John Workman, Fire Chief. I think there's standards in industry that we're going to be looking at and taking into consideration. I think there's standards in industry that we're going to be looking at and taking into consideration. I think that, you know, if you look at a Granby, which is a similar-sized community in both landmass and population, I think that's going to be one of the considerations that we're going to want to look at. I think one of the things that the committee is very much aware of is that the previous assessment that had been done, the terminology of Taj Mahal was thrown out, and probably the killer of that event. Honestly, if we just have someplace that doesn't have leaky roofs and frogs on the floor, I'd be happy with that. So I don't think anybody's really looking to build anything that's overly built. I think we really want to build the right-sized building, and I think we've tried to accomplish that with the formation of the group, not just taking fire-heavy personnel. So it'll really be a group of diversified population, including select board members, so that we really are building the right-sized thing for our community here.
Yeah, no, and I agree, and I think the key is how we educate the public ahead of time.
Absolutely.
You know, if there are, in fact, which there are, if there are standards out there, here are the standards, you can go look them up yourself. Here's where we set the bar, and clearly articulating and allowing ample time for the citizens to do their own research.
Yeah, there's not a standard for like this-sized community, this many apparatus base. And that's why I say it's an industry standard. So that's why you're going to be looking at communities of similar size and population.
Right, but if you, you know, hypothetically, if you're asking for expresso machines on every floor.
That would be ridiculous and be totally contrary to what we're trying to do.
Breaking it up.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a good question, it's one we definitely would like to address. And I don't know how you're addressing it with senior center. I mean, I don't know how you'd address the minimums for that. I think there again, it's probably, you know, an assessment of.
But add to the point that I think it was Chris or Annie made earlier, on the council agent, they had the list in there, this is what they, what they're.
Was that based on a standard?
Well.
They've gone to visit several.
Site visits.
So industry standard, really.
But they had, they had a, they articulated the process of how they came to that, versus just kind of throwing it in there.
Yeah, I think the reason why we just, as you say, throw it in there, but I think we really want to spend some time to do with a firm that can concentrate on it, with also an assessment of, you know, what other stations are out there, what are other communities doing, and bringing that forward into what we're looking at and proposing. So it's definitely industry standard, you know, what's out there for similar-sized communities, with a very much earmarked towards not wanting to overbuild the thing, because we want it to be successful more than anything else. And committing the design firm to helping really size it and determine that, I think is important. So it's not just, you know, oh, I'd like this, I'd like this, I'd like this, and these are my minimums. I think that would be just, I think that's what we want to avoid. I think we actually want the design firm to be part of, you know, what's comparable, what is industry standard, what makes sense for our community. And it should be more of a group effort than just the two chiefs, you know, thinking, oh, I'd like this office and that office.
Okay.
I think another big thing for the public would be safety, not just safety as far as safety of you and the staff and the police, but also, you know, safety of the community in terms of just like lighting and parking and things like that. I mean, I think stressing the importance of safety for everybody, I think, would be important early on.
Yeah, 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 we want to build the cheapest possible building that accommodates safety needs, and, you know, a little bit into the future, but not excessively so. I mean, there's some challenges, but I think that's why we put it in as the design firm to help with that.
All right, thanks, Sean.
Sure.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
On the whole thing?
On the RFQ?
Just, it's not here, but attachment D, is it spelled out? Does it match up to what we were already told? The property locations?
It's not attached to here, is it? I don't think so.
No, it's just, it's just referenced on page.
It's just referenced, we need to finalize it, to be honest, but it's the two town-owned properties is the existing fire station location and the highway department, as well as the three private we've been discussing.
Okay, so what if the highway department selected? Where's the highway department go?
That's a good question. I mean, we spent a lot of time evaluating all the town properties. There's not a lot of town property that would fit this. But that's something that if it was, would have to be taken into account in terms of the pros and cons of that property selection. I mean, one, we discuss some things offhand, but I mean, it's, it would have to be a bad, like, fully evaluated.
Okay.
Good, good. So we need to take a vote on this, or are we okay just saying that we're?
Okay, I went through the tasks. Do you want me to go through any more about the designer qualifications and how we're going to evaluate the minimum evaluation criteria? I don't need to, I just.
Yeah, I think the evaluation criteria are very common to many of our contracts, so.
They are, yes.
We're somewhat familiar with those, and they're the ones I know that, I think, were very similar probably to what was done for the senior center as well.
Yeah, they are.
Highly advantageous, advantageous, et cetera, those kinds of qualifications.
It did change to acceptable.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, highly advantageous, advantageous, acceptable, unacceptable.
Right, okay, yeah, so there's always a challenge trying to evaluate, especially when you've got very lengthy proposals to kind of narrow it down, and be sure you're comparing apples to apples here, but.
Yeah, so I mean, this is just all about experience, and then you experience the professional staff. There's, I don't think there's anything that would be particularly surprising in here, and the selection process is very similar to what was presented for the senior center.
Yeah, and then you did say that there would be three interviewed though, I think, right? For?
Up to three.
Up to three, based on after the review. It says interviews if required, so if one stood out after the review of the proposals, in theory, we could just submit that. It would depend on our review.
Yeah, would you have the ability, if each of these submissions identified one or two area public safety or similar kinds of buildings that you could actually go and visit? If they're local, I'm not talking about flying out of state or anything, but if there's some design work that they completed that we could look at, that would give you some, I think, give you some sense.
Yeah, I think that they'll have, they will definitely have information on that, because we, you know, have a requirement of how many facilities they have to have completed. So they'll, in their submission, have that information on which facilities they've completed, and they'll also have contact info for references. So we could definitely reach out to them by setting something up. We don't spell that out in here, but they will have to have provided that. So if we find out, oh, they did the facility in Bernerston, I don't know, somewhere 45 minutes drive, you know, we asked to go see it, I think that's something we could address. At that point, we don't speak to a visit in here.
Yeah, for myself, I have to really see something. Looking at something on paper doesn't give me the feel.
As long as the building site is within 100 miles of the town, the chief could drive.
Yes, I'm saying more or less, no one's flying anywhere, okay?
Yeah, no, but somewhere in, you know, west of Worcester type thing.
Yeah, 100 miles is key, that's all we authorize him to be, far out from the city. So, that way there's no travel reimbursement. Fit in his car.
Put you on the spot over there, Ian, okay.
To John's point, I just want to mention that I do have an update when we talk about the committees, about the landowners and the next step in following up to them, so I'll bring that up under the committee reports.
Okay, good.
Does the chair want to vote on this? And if so, what kind of motion are you looking for?
I'm not sure that we did one on the senior center, I can't recall, but I think we did. And I think it would be good just to formalize it, just so that we're in agreement essentially with the RFQ as presented, and.
I'll make a motion to authorize the committee to move forward with the RFQ as submitted.
Okay, can I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No? All right.
Don't mind, I will adjourn our meeting.
You may also do that.
Motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks to committee too, really appreciate all the good work.
Yep, perfect, I know it's been a long haul to get this far, so thanks for all the work that you guys have put in, and hopefully this RFQ will get out on the street and get some good responses, I think we can show some interest on it, that's great. So, good, thanks very much. All right, let us move forward here.
Chris?
Yes?
Point of order.
Yes.
Can I request that we go out of order?
Okay.
And take up, under signatures, police department PRF. As I understand it, that department head has to be up at 3:00 AM to go work something. Could we take his item up now? That is the PRF, Public Safety Communications Dispatcher.
Dispatch.
This one's a little unique, so the board may have questions.
All right, anybody have any opposition to that idea? Moving request for the police department up very quickly here in the forefront. Otherwise, it would be quite late in the meeting here, so. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Ian, come on up.
I just, I have to report tomorrow for 4:00 AM, so I just want to get some sleep before work today. I submitted a PRF for a dispatcher position, and the reason I did this is an additional position. I have a tentative resignation from a full-time police dispatcher, rather. This is for a part-time dispatcher position, but a tentative resignation in three months of a full-time dispatcher, a midnight dispatcher in particular. And I want to get ahead of the game before we potentially lose this dispatcher. The last time I requested a position for a dispatcher was in January of '22, and I just hired that part-time dispatcher, that's how long it took to get an applicant. She's currently going through the training. I want to make sure that should this dispatcher leave, which she accepted a full-time job in another field that she's been going to school for for a while, I want to just make sure that either I have somebody ready to fill this full-time position with the training, the adequate training, as well as if they don't want the position, at least I have another supplemental employee that can fill that position until we find somebody. The training is at the minimum of, there's 16 hours of E-911 answering class for the actual public safety answering point. There's 40 hours of emergency medical dispatch, and there's 40 hours of actual dispatch training. That's the, and then that's not including the in-service training, which is approximately about a month, when they actually work within the realm of the department with another dispatcher. So I'm simply just trying to get ahead of the game here. Should I lose this dispatcher, which I suspect I would, she's already accepted this job, but even if I don't, it's another dispatcher that I'll have trained to augment our force and defray overtime costs.
So when discussed at PPP, our question was the funding source. If we only budgeted for 168 hours, how are we going to put an extra person on?
Sure, so I, again, will qualify this year for the, which I haven't applied for the grant, but I meet all the qualifications, and the support incentive grant is $30,000. So that's what we get typically annually for a support incentive grant, and that will be adequate for this funding.
Can you just repeat what the grant is?
It's the E-911, it's the State Communications Department. The grant is called a support incentive grant. It's for anybody that has a public safety answering point in their community. They support that with a certain amount of money based on calls for service and population. And so annually, we get about $30,000 for that.
And how have you used that money in the past?
I only use it for emergencies, and then otherwise, it just gets absorbed by the town.
Yeah, we've benefited quite a bit the last couple of years at least.
Yeah, that money has been coming into us for, I mean, I'm going to say at least at that amount, at least the last 10 years or so, because it goes back to when I was on finance.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was a regular.
So that's, that would take care of that.
Fund in part, okay.
So the request then is for a regular, consistent, part-time position?
A part-time position, you know, it could be considered, it's part-time, so it's per diem, it's when we have open shifts.
But I mean, part-time would be that those, that person would be guaranteed X number of hours per week? Per diem with open shifts, right?
We don't have any classification for a per diem dispatcher. It's always been classified as part-time, and that's when shifts are available.
Okay.
And you have it here for eight to 16 hours a week?
Yes.
It's not unbudgeted anyway?
I'm sorry?
It's not unbenefited, I mean.
It's not unbenefited, yes, eight to 16 hours a week, you know, one to two shifts a week.
Okay, all right. Any questions on that? Anybody else? All right, could we have a motion on that?
I think I did make the motion.
Did you? I'm sorry.
Did you have a second?
Did you have a second? Yes.
I'll look at the note taker, I don't, I don't make the motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
A second, all right.
Thank you for your consideration of moving it forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, all right. Good, no opposed. All right, now let us move on. All right, let's, a couple of things here, we've got town administrator report. Ed, you want to give us your report briefly?
Let's see, Bradley Yaxton and I are working with the auditors regarding some follow-up questions they had for the fiscal year 2021 audit. Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk, has had the early in-person voting information for the November 8th, 2022 state election posted to the website. The Saturdays, October 22nd and 29th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then Monday to Thursday, October 24th to 27th, and October 31st to November 3rd, the regular business hours from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. The Conservation Commission has received a couple of applications for the conservation agent position, and is setting up a subcommittee for the interview process. I will be helping them and joining them through this process. They held one interview last week and have another interview scheduled for tomorrow. Charter Spectum upgraded our modem and has added a router today here at town hall to increase our internet speed in preparation for the changeover to the voice-over IP telephones. The town hall elevator stopped working yesterday, and we had to call the elevator vendor for a service call to have it fixed, and they were able to get it back working again in about two and a half hours, fortunately. And the contractor, who will be performing the Man-Hand Metal Sanctuary Trail reconstruction work of the trail restoration, is scheduled to be beginning network next week. And then upcoming select board meetings for October are the 11th and the 25th.
Was anybody in the elevator?
Yeah, right, that was a good question.
No, it's interesting how their safety systems work. David had gotten into it. Once he had gotten into it, he didn't press the floor for the basement, but it went right to the basement floor, doors opened, let him out. He got out, said, why am I down here? The door is closed, and that shut the whole system down. Turned out to be a jack sensor on the elevator, but, you know, like I say, their safety systems are, I didn't realize how they, how well they actually worked, so. It went, and somehow it's programmed to, okay, we go to the bottom floor, let whoever's on out, and.
Bless you.
And then we take ourselves out of service.
That's pretty amazing, because we just had it inspected earlier.
Yeah, literally, the last meeting, your report, there was an inspection of that elevator.
I won't tell you how many cars I've, times I've had a car in, and whether it's an inspection or an oil change, and they go through it, and they come back, and, you know, three weeks later, you got a sensor that blows, and you can take it back for 700 bucks, so.
Anybody have any questions on Ed's report?
Nope.
All right, let's move on to some select board reports. Anybody have any meetings? Joy, would you like to start?
Sure. I will start with Conservation Commission. I think Ed covered everything that was, I was going to report to.
I'm sorry.
It's, no, you did my job, that's fine. I'm not going to complain. Their next meeting is October 3rd. They're still looking for volunteers, I'll mention that. The planning board met with Ken Comia from PVPC and with the Housing Authority, and they went over the zoning bylaws that affect affordable housing. There was a really great discussion with them and their consultant, and they're going to go over accessory apartments more, and just permitting different-sized parcels and multiuses for the detached, existing structures as accessory apartments. So there was a lot of good talk in regards to affordable housing in that meeting. Their next meeting, I believe, is nine, or 10:05. And then Housing Authority Working Group with MHP met last Wednesday. We discussed with MHP moving forward with the housing bylaw, and they are going to come back with us with some port of documents that we can send out to the community in support of the housing bylaw, including flyers, images, and information. And Housing Authority's next meeting is also October 3rd, and that was all.
CPC hasn't met, you heard from Public Safety.
CPC hasn't met. You heard from Public Safety. Just so you know, too, we are going to invite Williamsburg folks to come and talk about their process in the Public Safety Building, just so we can learn from what they went through. They also got a lot of state money recently. And then we're also doing a little field trip to Granby to check out theirs, Public Safety Complex, because it's very similar size and land mass as Southampton. But the next meeting, we just decided, was, I think, the 17th of October. And COA is meeting next, October 5th, it must be next Wednesday. And then the Senior Center Feasibility Committee, I wanted you to bring something to Select Board for your ideas of it. Basically, we had our first meeting with Abacus. Lot of information. We provided them information about staffing and programs and all sorts of things. We also have document on each of the properties, the GIS mapping and all kinds of information, what it's zoned, what's the size of the lot, all of that. And so we provided all that information with Abacus. Next Thursday, the 6th of October, they're coming for a site visit from 10:00 to 2:00. They're going to meet with the committee at noon time, because that's when the committee is available. Then they are planning on visiting the police station, the senior center, and then the three parcels of land. So Chris will need to contact them again, and we're talking about three properties, Marmon Keystone, Gilaher, and Labree. And so we drafted questions for the landowners. I just wanted to review them with you and see if you have other suggestions, because we do have to do a pretty quick turnaround to get the information from the landowners. How much acres are you interested in selling or donating? Each of the committees are requesting a minimum of three acres. Is there a particular area of the parcel that you're interested in selling or donating? Because most of these parcels are really large. Are you interested in offering this property for either the senior center or the Public Safety Complex or both? Is your primary interest in selling versus donating the land? And if you're selling, do you have a price in mind, per acre or total acreage price? So those were the initial questions, and also to let them know that they would like to have a site visit and if they would like to be there at the time of the walking around the property, permission to take pictures, that sort of thing. So I didn't know if you had any other suggestions for questions that Chris can pose to these three private property owners.
So if the walkthrough is going to be on the 6th, is that right?
Yep. Most likely in the morning, because that's when some of the committee members are available.
A week from Thursday, so we need to get a letter out and turn it around. I mean, I'm assuming you want an answer back before the 6th, so that you have it a day or two ahead, at least, a couple of days ahead, maybe, before the meeting?
Are there any other questions that come to mind of them? This is sort of somewhat preliminary, but they're coming out right away and starting to do site, you know, checking on wetlands, checking the maps, that sort of thing.
I can't think of any extra questions, but if you're going to do, if you're going to do a letter versus a phone call, and the letter, because these are the folks that we engage for the COA, right?
Yeah, it's for both, yeah. And Chris will be the one contacting them.
Abacus is the design firm for the COA, yeah.
For the COA, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Again, if it's a letter, just maybe, you know, that intro paragraph, because we said we'd be in touch with them within 90 days. Like, tonight, we just approved the Public Safety, blah, blah, blah. We anticipate awarding here and, you know, just keeping them informed, assuming they're not watching us tonight.
I think what might work, given the timeframe, we can do a letter and if it's in tomorrow's, hand it in at the post office, they would get it on Thursday, and maybe asking for a Monday, Tuesday response time. One, the Marmon Keystone folks are in Springfield, though they aren't local, so that might take longer. But they could maybe respond by email, you know, or send out a letter but have them respond by email. That would maybe cut down.
I was going to suggest that in addition to the letter, just to be certain that they get the information, that you email it as well.
Email and? Email, oh, email the letter.
Email the letter.
Perfect. Good idea.
And also USPS it.
Well, yeah.
I mean, hopefully that'll cut down, because that's a very narrow window.
Yeah. Okay. Is there, is there any need to mail the letter then, if we email, if I do an attachment?
I don't know, Ed.
We wouldn't send a certified one necessarily. I mean, it would just be a...
I'd recommend doing both.
Yeah? Just regular, regular mail plus an email with the letter attached?
We know USPS is slower than probably normal. However, we also know there are internet interruptions, so.
That's true, too, yeah. Okay, well, we'll work on that, so.
All right.
You can, yeah, I think I heard most of them, but you can let me know those questions. Any other questions to think about? I mean, I think that's true, that the parcels are not, you know, some of these parcels are, you know, fairly good size, and I don't know that they've thought...
The first set of questions already got answered, right? I don't recall seeing those responses.
The first set of questions was just simply, are you interested?
But didn't we follow up, who's going to be the point person?
We did, and I've heard that from two out of the three, actually. I have not heard from the third one. So I did hear back from Ryan Gilaher that he's the person, and I did hear back from Mitch Bolotin, I think his name is, who's the realtor representing Marmon Keystone. But I have not heard back from the Labrees as to who's, who's talking for them, because the property came into us, so the letter was written out to Eugene Labree, but on the response, it's Jim's email. So the last correspondence I had done by email, I think I had said for Jim to please forward it to Eugene, but I didn't, didn't hear anything back on that. But basically, all we had asked them is, are you interested in talking to the town about a potential sale or donation? And are there any particular things you'd like us to know about your property? So there were just some very small things, yeah, nothing, nothing in detail like this. We didn't ask them about, you know, space or, you know, what corner of the land would you really like to kind of, you know, carve off or anything like that? So this would kind of be that next step, I think, which would be fine. Okay, I will put that on my to-do list.
Okay, and then the last one is Board of Assessors, and they're down to two members because one member moved out of town. And so they do have a potential person who's interested in being, so that we may be seeing a volunteer application coming our way. But they continue to just do the work at the office in the absence of a permanent PA.
Okay, great. Thanks. John?
So PPP being met, but it's a page and a half our agenda, so I'll save that for then. Greenway Communities met. I attended that meeting. They did not have a quorum, so there were no votes taken, but there was still a lengthy, you know, 60, 75-minute conversation about next steps. And they're, they are working, I think the Town Ministers are going to touch on this later, so I won't go down that path, but their focus has shifted to how to best communicate this out to the, to the masses and the next step for anticipation of board approval tonight on their request. And Finance has not met, and Capital Committee has not met.
Okay, all right. Francis?
Okay. The Newer School Committee met on September 14th, and they announced that they received $25,000 from the state as a partial Chapter 70 reimbursement for reduced enrollment last year. Actually, last year, they were down 40 students from the previous year. So we are grateful for the money. There was discussion about the potential utilization of those funds due to some imminent needs. They need to replace the refrigerator in the cafeteria, estimated to cost $12,000, and a new water heater, hot water heater, at $14,000. So there goes $25,000 very quickly, if that's the route they choose to fund it. In addition to the resignation last spring of the IT Director for the District, the Superintendent announced the resignation of the Business Administrator, effective 9/29, which is this Friday. She's in the process of interviewing and very close to replacing the Business Administration, and is still looking. They have outsourced temporarily the IT functions for the district. The Superintendent shared at that meeting her three-year strategic plan, which I'm sure will be made public if it already hasn't been. The committee conducted its first review of a number of new policies focusing on homeless students' rights, education for military children, educational opportunities for children in foster care, and homeschooling, homeschool education. So they have, schools today are faced with so many challenges and so many issues. And so this was the first read, and I think, believe at this second meeting, they will either modify or vote to accept it the way it was presented. And then over the summer, to start this new year, the school hired a total of eight, or 11, new and replacement staff. The enrollment this year is up from 468 last year to 483 this year. The Bylaws Committee then met on September 21st. We received approval from the Attorney General's Office for all seven bylaws that were voted by the town at its recent annual town meeting. However, comments from the Attorney General's Office recommended that we consult legal counsel regarding our canvassing and soliciting bylaw for guidance, so that we can kind of clarify some of the questions that they raised in order that we avoid any potential problems in the future. And, you know, that's the number-one priority. So therefore, we're requesting access to the town's legal counsel for that purpose, just to make sure we're in the right lane all the way. We received this, the status of requests to departments. We reviewed the status of requests to departments and committees for feedback on drafts that require their expertise. I have been sending these things to the, especially to the committees, to the, to the town email address, and I've sent requests from Lucy that we get personal email addresses, so that I can be certain that people receive any communication. In the short term, the Bylaw Committee's next priority will be the non-criminal ticketing schedule, and for that, we need to rely very heavily on department heads and committees for the information that that bylaw will contain. The Board of Health is meeting on Monday, October 3rd, and the HR feasibility study, regional study funded through the PVPC is on the agenda a little later in the program, and they met on September 19th. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes. Did I hear you right, that you said that the $25,000 that came in was because of a decline in enrollment? Why are we getting more money if it's less enrollment?
No, to make up for the lost enrollment. There was a reduction in enrollment, and so that was, that was...
I misunderstood your question earlier. I think it was $137,000.
$137,000.
So 20 into 21, because of COVID, there are over 40 kids, over, over 10% of our population withdrew from the school. That directly impacted our Chapter 70 calculation.
Oh, okay.
And then they all came back the next year, which would have impacted, so it would have been a double hit. So there were probably two or three dozen communities that this happened to. So legislation did a special pass and restored that funding, as if the kids didn't leave one time only.
I get it. That's good. Okay.
And I just had one other question. In terms of the bylaws, so our attorney, you looked at those bylaws before town meeting and approved them. Then they went to town meeting, and the town approved them. Then they went to Attorney General, and the Attorney General said, go back to your attorney and make sure they approve them.
No, they, yeah.
No, I mean, the Attorney General approved them.
Approved them.
Yeah, they did. They're just...
Why did they recommend that we go back to our attorney?
They're just cautioning, when you get to this, it could be contentious. So when, if, if an incident came up, and you had to enforce the bylaw, I think it was that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's how I interpret it, was that when an incident comes up and you're trying to apply this bylaw, this might be a sticky point. You want to just double-check your action with general counsel at that time. But it is, it is approved.
There is nothing in it that they disagreed with, except for the fact that they wanted to make sure, as Chris said, that we were very clear, very precise.
When you have to...
To avoid, you know, complications down the line.
Okay, I understand the difference. And in fact, as we had drafted them and put it together, we had comments from our legal counsel saying, we believe you need to make it, you know, ours X to X, because otherwise, the Attorney General will probably not approve this. So we had, we had listened to their advice earlier when we had drafted it. And then, so I don't know, everybody just kind of has to weigh in, I guess.
Yeah, and the Attorney General's Office made the same comments. Because you're right, one of the ones, what everybody asked about was, and I can't remember if, you know, the soliciting is, remember if it's allowed till 8:00 PM or 9:00 PM, but everyone, well, that's, that's late. Why don't we do five? And our town council had said, well, we've seen in other communities this be challenged, because it's restrictive of only going to five. So we did follow the town council's, you know, recommendation, but even though we did, that was one of the Attorney General's comments.
So they just reiterated it, basically. So I took it as a cautionary tale, basically, not, not anything else, but because it's been posted and it's actually approved, so, yeah.
Yeah, they are now in effect, because they have been posted and advertised.
So before anything happens, we may, you know, really want to get, clarify any of the issues that the Attorney General's Office brought up.
Right. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Good. And for me, on the Ad-Hat Grant Committee, not a whole lot. We're just waiting on results from two or three of the grants. We're kind of in suspension here, hoping that before the end of September, which is the end of the federal fiscal year, we might hear back on the Hazard Mitigation Plan one and on the Second Mass Trails one for the Greenway. Those are two that are out there. And we did apply recently with the chief in the school, Chief Illingsworth, and the school for the Safe Roots to School Signs and Lines grant, which should be a pretty quick turnaround as well. So I'm hoping that maybe by the next meeting, we'll have some good news. We'll see. But there's a couple of things still in the hopper, and then we'll be looking at what else is coming up. This is kind of the time period in the fall where some of these big grants get, get announced in terms of their, opening up their applications. So we'll be looking at that fairly soon. Okay, if no other comments or questions on reports, let's move on to appointments and resignations. And we've had someone sitting here, so thank you for your patience. Steven Johnson, right? Or is it Stefan? Steven, all right, the way it was spelled. I wasn't, I didn't want to make that mistake, but so...
Steven Johnson. I'm your new neighbor at 20 Walcott Street and applicant to volunteer for the Open Space Committee.
Great. So I know you wrote us a good, long letter, which I won't necessarily read, but why don't you sort of summarize it for the public that's listening? And tell us a little bit about you. You've got 30 years of background in land conservation and sustainable development, and work with local government, from what you said on your applications.
Yes, all of that, and I encourage you to read it. It's more than I would bother you or the listening public with at this hour. But both by academic training and professional practice, I've worked in natural resource conservation all my life, both in the nonprofit sector for land conservancies and in government. I started work in the Secretary's Office and state government here in Massachusetts. But because through this wonderful professional life, I've had opportunity to do a lot of work with individual families to help them achieve their vision for their family lands. I know just how rewarding that can be, and I see Southampton poised at a very opportune moment. A lot of open land, but always pressure for new housing development or economic development, development, development. So doing the right kind of conservation before you're chasing after bulldozers is the way to best help landowners. And I really focus on the landowners, because I think we all focus on the environmental, environmental benefits that we all appreciate. That's what the Open Space Committee is about. But there wouldn't be any accessible open space if it wasn't for far-sighted landowners. We either donate or sell their land for that purpose or otherwise retain ownership and enhance their stewardship by making it publicly available. These are the kinds of things I like to work with families on. I don't know to what degree that might be in the future of the Open Space Committee, but in contrast to the Conservation Commission, which I've served on in other communities, I'd rather be a facilitator and a problem solver than regulator. I've done both.
That kind of summed it up.
You're here.
Understandable.
I can totally understand that, I think, yeah, exactly. Well, and I think this is a very opportune time, too, with what we've been hearing about over the last couple of meetings with the open space and the interest with Kestrel and so forth, working with Southampton and really having Southampton on their, on their radar in terms of some, some potentially larger projects up in the northwestern part of town in particular, which is kind of up in your corner anyway, which is even better.
My neck of the woods.
Right up, right up on our mountain area, right. So good. All right. Well, thanks for coming. That's appreciative.
Welcome.
Could we have any questions for Steven? Could we have any questions for Stephen while he's here?
I'll just say that I'm expressing my support for Stephen. He's been coming to our meetings, and he's been vocal, very vocal, and we really appreciate his opinions. So I will make a motion to appoint Stephen Johnson at-large position for the Open Space Committee, term to expire June thirtieth, 2024.
Second.
All right. If no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for stepping up.
Kindly.
Thank you, and thanks for coming. And thanks for stepping up. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. All right. And we have a second one, actually. It's sort of speaking to John's comment on the Greenway Committee. We have a David DeRoches. If I've pronounced that incorrectly, I apologize, but this would be an application to be on the Greenway Committee with a term to expire June thirtieth, 2025. We have a letter in our packet, we have the application form, and what we do appreciate is people are, are putting in a little bit more of a cover letter to go along with the application, which, you know, kind of fills out a bit more detail in terms of that. So I'll just try to summarize here. So basically, David and family have moved into Southampton back in 2019. They've been very involved in town sports with their little kids and had run into Aaron Towser, who's the head of the Greenway Committee, and talked about their common interests in biking and the bike trail. And so basically, way back when, apparently, before moving to Southampton, David used to spend his time at UMass and spent time biking between Northampton and Amherst area. So was very interested in biking and using the trail, very familiar with it, and would like to join the committee and see the bike trails expanded and improved, and see this as a way to potentially improve our local community for the sake of his children and all the others that would have access to it. His own background, he's an attorney with experience in settlement negotiations and mediation, and his focus in law school was environmental law. So good mixture of backgrounds here and interest levels to join the, join the committee. So he's also stepping up, so we much appreciate. Any thoughts or comments?
Well, my only thought is, can we just go ahead and also appoint him to PBB? We have to wait for him to apply.
We might have to, we might have to wait for him to apply, or you might have to meet him at least first, right?
I met him, he zoomed in at a meeting.
Oh, you didn't meet him? Okay, all right, very good.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of David DeRoches to the Greenway Committee, term to expire June thirtieth of 2025.
Second.
All right. Perfect. Francine, second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moved.
Can I just comment that I think we hit the jackpot with these two?
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of their backgrounds, they're just what we need right now.
Exactly.
Absolutely appreciate it.
Great backgrounds and great timing. I mean, this is, this is just really appropriate in terms of finding people and people willing to, to step up. And again, some of these are, you know, are newer folks to town over the last three or four years, and that's great to show, you know, that level of, of interest in wanting to step up. So much appreciated. Yes. All right, let's move on to new business. I think we are here with the animal control agreement with, with Westfield. Are we at the final stage of this? I believe we've...
Yes.
...talked about it a couple of meetings, and I don't know if there's been any changes on this, or...
There have, because Chief Illingsworth had a couple of questions. One was, were they still going to do the wildlife control through it? Because neither in the old one or the new one doesn't say anything about it. And Shanar Reed, who is the first Assistant City Solicitor in Westfield and is also a Southampton resident, I've been dealing with, and I had reached out to Shanar, and she broke back to me. I called Margaret this morning, and the gist is that the Westfield ACO will not respond to nuisance wildlife, i.e. there is a family of groundhogs under someone's shed or deceased wildlife, but will respond to calls for sick and injured, injured wildlife. So she added, actually, on that one, Section C to be attached for that. And then Ian also had one other question. Find it. Yeah. My other request is Section 5I. Is it possible to make an amendment that would make it the responsibility of the owner of domesticated animal that has had emergency surgery or services to be responsible for paying that cost if they pick up the animal? And then if the domesticated animal has not claimed, those emergency costs would then be responsibility of the town of Southampton. The way it was first written, which was consistent with the old agreement, was actually that cost became our responsibility, even if the animal was picked up. So that has been changed also. So Ian's questions have been answered. Lucy's concern, going back to the first time we went over it, is, well, is there a way we can require a Southampton residence that didn't pick up their animal to pay the fees for it? There is not through the agreement, we can't, you know, we can't do it through the agreement with Westfield to make that, but it may be working with our town council, a possibility to do something, maybe with one of the bylaws that is currently being, being looked at to say that, okay, you know, if a town of Southampton resident owns an animal and it's, you know, picked up and needs emergency services and, you know, that owner is responsible for those, even if they don't pick up the animal. So we will, we will look at those possibilities.
Yeah, that'd be interesting. We might be able to weave something into the current bylaws that's being looked at, you know, the, the one for dogs and kennels that we had referred back to general counsel a couple of months ago, probably, but...
And then Chris had reached out to me this afternoon and all the craziness and...
She bothered you.
You never bother me. You might make me pull my hair out, what's left of it a little bit more, but, and asked, you know, can we break out some of these costs? So didn't have a lot of time to do that, plus the internet was down for about almost three hours while Spectrum was upgrading our modem. But was, was able to go back and pull like the fiscal '22 payments to the Westfield Animal Shelter. And I can't break them down individually, but I can tell you approximately $6,000 was expended and paid. However, I will, you know, approximately $3,000 of that six was our, I'll say, per capita assessment, you know, charge. So about $3,000 would be associated with, whether you'd say, animal care, weekend calls or, you know, after-hours calls. Lucy was able to copy a couple of invoices for me. One was actually from the first warrant in fiscal year '22. The total invoice was $1,088.26. Of that, the quarterly portion of the annual assessment was $748. And then there was a $50 charge for, which is the regular cost of a cat brought to the shelter, sick cat brought to the shelter, and then an injured owl that ended up flying away. And there was, let's see...
I guess it was okay.
Yeah.
Didn't want to beat her.
The owl must have been playing possum.
Really?
There was a $175.26 charge on that one for a cat, of which $45 was boarding, and $130.26 was vaccines. And there was another charge for a cat for $15 for boarding. And, yeah, that totals that one. And then she had our three other invoices for warrant '04, '05, and '06, one each. Let's see, there was a weekend call of $100, a weekend call of $100, a total of $200.
And those get paid by the, the owner when they retrieve their animal, right? Or the, these are our payments? We have to pay them?
These are our payments, correct.
So that weekend call, okay.
There was, let's see, an injured cat that was brought in, or a regular call, it was $50, a stray jog, which was an after-hours call of $100, and then a medical cost for a cat of $98.
So we've had a few calls.
We've had a few calls.
Yeah, and I think my, my original question was, you know, because there's so much in here about if the owner doesn't pay it, it's the town's responsibility. My question was partly like, how many of these, how many times are we worried, how many times are we getting charged because the owner actually doesn't want to retrieve their animal and just, you know, leaves it for the town to deal with? And that, that isn't able to be broken out at this point in time, but I mean, it doesn't sound like that's a regular recurrence. I mean, it's not true that, but I mean, the, the after-hours calls, though...
Or the weekend, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess all the, all the after-hours calls are ours, they're not part of the, not part of something that the owner has to pick up in terms of cost, right?
Correct.
That's number six on the, on the contract here.
Mm-hmm.
So $50 per call during Monday through Friday, eight to four, $100 Monday through Friday, four to eight PM, and Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. Call lasts for two hours. So, yeah, I guess that's part of what we have to do on weekends.
Correct.
But maybe we can work it into some kind of reimbursement.
Maybe there's some way to think about that as we go forward with our bylaw, but...
Yeah. We'll definitely have to cross-reference this with the bylaw.
Right. I mean, so basically, there's a, there's a flat, there's a flat fee because of, now it's the 60 cents per head, per, for population, right?
Correct.
It's our flat fee anyway.
That's our flat fee.
And then some of these others are, you know, per, per animal, per, per incident, basically. Okay. I just wanted a little clarity. Yep.
No, what we have in our packet stops at page eight, but I suspect there's at least a page nine.
Oops.
Actually, in the signing sheets, there...
That's all that's there?
On page nine. Page nine is the Select Board's side of the signing sheet.
Is it all five of us or just the chair? So I can word the motion correctly.
It is all five of you.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement between us and the city of Westfield for animal control services.
One second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, and this is a five-year agreement, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
Permit the motion.
John?
John.
And the second.
Aye, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. Next, Open Space Committee amended charge. And I think this was just a slight variation on what we've seen before, just to have the staggered terms?
Well, what I did is I, I reworded the section on appointments for the, to correspond with the three-year staggered terms for at-large and the one-year terms for, whether you call them appointments or elections for the boards and committees. Actually, do I have a signing copy here? It'll be easier to find.
Well, you have it here. We can just read it out. At-large members for three years for each member, staggered. So, so that as equal a number of terms as possible shall expire each year and shall begin on the first business day in July. Initial terms of the at-large members, when appointed in '22, shall be for one, one for one year, one for two years, and one for three years. The terms of the members from the boards and committees shall be for one year each. So that means that if Joy, for example, was from her committee, whichever committee was on, she was appointed from, what, Conservation Committee or something, to open space, she would be on for a year, but then would have to be renewed, reappointed every year, essentially. Okay.
That's what we do now with all of our committee assignments.
Correct, that's right. But this clarifies it in this, in this charge.
Yeah, because you, sometimes they will vote the person to represent them on that committee. To this point in time, we really didn't have a, shall we say, set term.
Right.
You don't want to have, and again, picking on the Conservation Commission, you wouldn't want to have them, and your example, appoint Joy for two or three years if she only had one year left on her term on the Conservation Services. That's why I should recommend writing it this way.
Okay. I think that's clear. Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve the Open Space Committee charge as amended.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have, I think we don't have anything more on the Green Community Grant in this package, right? And you just have that as kind of a reminder?
As a pending item, waiting for them to get back with those three specific other proposals.
Okay. So we'll jump right down to the upper applications and decision tracker updates. So in your package, you've got the update, I believe, from Judy, which is the short one, which is sort of showing round two. We are up to 31 actual proposals now. So this tracker just shows you the date that we received it, the name of the project, and the amount requested. With that, we had a couple from our last meeting that we wanted to go back on, as well as we have two new ones, so...
Just on that, on that tracker, she says this has been approved, right?
Um, yes, but still, we approved it by vote, but we're still waiting for the, it's in the package tonight.
Yeah.
The supplemental information. So maybe I jumped the gun by putting in approved, but we did actually approve it. But we do want to have the discussion briefly about the information they provided tonight. Just, they answered our questions, I think, on that. Okay. But, yeah, this one did get marked out in terms of the approved, so we've got to update her, her chart a little bit, too. So we have, in the package, we still have the ones that I don't think I've seen anything new on, which are the integrated fire and security, right? The...
No, I've sent them two emails asking for further information, have not received a response.
Nothing in from them, so we won't spend our time focusing on that. If we get other information, we will come back to it. Yeah, John?
I mean, we received it on June 22nd. Today is September...
Right.
26th. It's been 90 days. I'm assuming the two email communication outreach happened greater than seven days ago, right? You didn't send one today and one yesterday, right? They're spread out over time.
Yeah, I would probably say, and I'm going by my memory, that I sent one probably a week ago, and the one probably before that was probably maybe four to five weeks before that.
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't actually discuss it, though, until August 30th meeting. That was our first discussion of the proposal. So it's been a month. Yes. Yeah, it's been, well, a little over a month, actually. So I think if we don't hear much by the next meeting, I don't know. I mean, I would think if they...
I was going to suggest we just close it out for a little bit.
I would probably do one other thing and say, okay, haven't had any luck with email. Is there something wrong there?
Make a phone call?
Make a phone call, send a letter, yes.
Okay. Let's do one more try and see if they don't have any response, then we will take a different direction on that one. The other one, I think, that was pending that we had put on hold last meeting was the Parks Commission. We wanted, I think we were generally in favor of their proposal to resurface the tennis courts, but we wanted a more recent, updated quotation on the cost of that, because they had put in a cost from a year or so ago and put in an inflation factor that they had just kind of guesstimated, and we wanted something a bit more precise. And I don't see anything here on that either.
I took it upon myself to reach out to Vermont Recreational, who is the ones from the original quote, to ask for an updated quote. They first asked if I'd send them some, they first asked me if the cracks had gotten bigger since last year. I told them straight out, I don't know. So they asked if I'd take some photos of them, so I took some photos and sent them along. Then they followed up and said, originally, they said they would just base the quote on the length of cracks they had listed from last year without me measuring them, and then they asked if I'd go measure them. Actually, Randall was kind enough to measure them for me, so I sent them that information probably mid-last week or so. Actually, Randall was kind enough to measure them for me, so I sent them that information probably mid-last week or so. And I am waiting to hear back from them on the updated quote from that information.
Okay, so maybe next meeting or something, we'll have that information as well. That one should come forward, I would assume. I would.
Yeah. I have no doubts it'll come.
Will still be on on the table. Okay. And then just briefly on Bishis, we did vote to approve it because I think we said we wanted to give them a direct signal that we were in favor of it. We knew it was time-sensitive because of the harvest season, et cetera. But we did ask them for a little bit of comparative analysis about wages and and loss of revenue over the six months. And they have provided that in an email to us, which is in your packets, talking about their profit and loss between January and August of twenty-one versus twenty-two. And I think they've made a pretty compelling argument. Unless anybody has any questions, I think we will just keep that as formally approved or reapproved, whatever we want to call it. Just we did get the supplemental information we asked for in a very timely fashion. Does anybody have any comments or questions, or you would like to treat that differently? Or does that satisfy everybody's question about that one?
I think I think he responded to the questions and the information certainly points to the impact on their business.
Anybody else? Thoughts?
I think they provided what satisfies me.
All right, so I think we will consider that approved, so fine. Next one, we have a new application from Good Eats To Go, which is in the request of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And I must say, Betsy Heneman, the manager of the business, solo manager, provided us lengthy documentation to go for her request. And a combination of things here. Would anybody like to sort of try to talk about this? This is basically the drive-through sandwich shop up at Red Rock Plaza. Just started in twenty-twenty-one, right in the middle of COVID, basically, and did a lot of work, I know, providing go-to meals for the senior center when they were trying to use CAREZAC money to provide meals for seniors at home. They did a lot of those kinds of catering, kinds of special lunches, I guess I would say, takeout lunches for the seniors, and that's been some of their business. So partly what she's talking about is a website and social media campaign and signage. Probably expanding a little area right next to the shipping container that she's housed in right now for a little bit of a seating area, which would be on the side away from the highway, obviously. And a new sandwich prep station to keep everything, I guess, cold, but also ready in time. Hiring maybe a part-time employee. And I guess the other question was whether or not we could support her for catching up on, I guess, back, back, what, back bills, basically. She is behind in her bills, I think, from what I'm reading here.
Ten thousand, thirty-four hundred.
Yeah, because at this point in time, as a new business startup, she really hasn't had a chance to be able to collect her own paycheck yet. So a lot of this is just sweat equity right into the business here. She's hoping to expand into business lunch catering as well. So that's kind of the the outline of what she's asking for. So open to thoughts and discussion here. She has provided a number of estimates, or at least an estimate for each of the things she's talking about on the website and the signage, on the refrigerated prep station. She showed us some of her credit card balances in terms of being a bit underwater. Any questions, thoughts about this one?
I definitely support helping local businesses. I think that also came up in the survey of what to do with ARPA funds, number three. So I think the townspeople do also. I think the requests that we've gotten so far from the businesses, I think one of them was clearly presented as a COVID public health emergency. I think another one was some unfortunate instances that played into it, perhaps in addition to the COVID, you know, such as the bridge and fire and, you know, a startup business kind of thing. So I just was looking at the ARPA eligible spending category, and I was paying particular attention to what they checked off on those. And a few of them said other. So I guess I just want assurance from the board, I guess, that in and of itself, negative economic impact is suffices to support a local business apart from respond to COVID or anything else, that in and of itself, that that is a category that stands by itself. Because I think this particular, because you might think that a business with a drive-up would actually be in better shape during a COVID pandemic than other ones might be. So I'm just curious if people feel comfortable with a broad category of negative economic impact.
I read this is some of it responds to economic impact. And the other is kind of building and getting resources that she needs so that she could stay in business and continue. So it's kind of like an investment and an impact, the way I read it.
I didn't bring my detailed categories on negative economic impact with me tonight. Should we tell you more specifically how that reads out? I don't know if you have anything handy on your, some of yours, no? The things that we've gotten from you.
You need the definitions rather than just the list.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't bring that with me tonight. I'm sorry, I didn't bring my laptop. John, do you have a sense of anything from your knowledge of other other kinds of business, small businesses that have tried to look at negative economic impact? Maybe other places you've heard of from Holyoke to Westfield to anybody offhand?
No, for the, I mean.
The overall definition of negative economic impact? I mean, I think that was an approved category from
Yeah.
from ARPA, for sure, but.
I think there's enough supporting documentation in here to to kind of justify. I mean, I would, I would, I mean, one of the flags for me is, you know, catching up on personal expenses. But if she's a sole proprietor and has been, in theory, using all that money to keep the business afloat, I mean, I guess one could play into it. I just, I'm just concerned about this whole, I've been concerned about this whole process about non-municipal entities.
Yeah.
And and it seems like, you know, one comes up and, you know, we can kind of get, and there's more coming now. And then you know, the feedback that well, I want to, I want to preference my next comments about everybody that's on the list. I'm not, these are not specific to Go Eats. It's just a general statement to non-municipal entities that are applying, applying that I think we have to be cautious and possibly do some due diligence. I would be, this is money specifically earmarked for the overall benefit of the town of Southampton, and it's left to us to decide what meets that definition. So I'm concerned that if the, if the, you know, gossip lines are correct out there, that some of these businesses are, they're already in the market and have already signed agreements to open, to close their Southampton locations and open in abutting towns. So I think, again, I'm talking about everybody on the list.
Yeah.
This isn't specified to the one. You know, I think we'd have to put some caveat on that, that, you know, if if we do approve these, you know, and whether it's it's retro or not, you know, we can't, I mean, the two that we did, I think those are mute because those are in the past. But the, we also, there's nothing in here that perhaps we missed the mark where we should have required sign-offs from the tax collector. You know, I don't want to get in this, I wouldn't want to be in a spot where I approved for ABC Company and find out that, you know, that they're, they're delinquent. They're a sole proprietor, which means that their house attaches to it and that, you know, they haven't paid their taxes in two years and there's a lien on it. Again, this is all hypothetical. I'm just saying, we don't have, I don't think we have enough check and balances here. The difficult for me is, when do we implement this, since we've already approved some?
Right, good point.
Or is it, and everybody else is comfortable with it? But I just, I'd have a hard time giving out money to a company that, that, you know, again, on paper for all the right reasons, but knowing that they're in the process of moving to East Hampton.
Oh, yeah. So. No, if that were true, I mean, I definitely would not be in favor of that. Obviously, it's got to be a Southampton business, or it doesn't qualify.
Well, they are at the time they applied, or they were at the time they applied.
But we don't, we don't stipulate that they need to remain in Southampton for three years, five years, something.
We don't, we don't tie anything to it. And the other thing is, excluding the church, because I think that was a little more cut and dry, the other business that we approved, we had the business owner come in so we could ask the questions.
Right.
Here, they haven't. Now, we probably haven't, I don't know if we've asked, I don't know what the emails say, other than supporting documents. So.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think maybe because they had surprised, I've put in so many supporting documents, I don't know that we had asked specifically that they also come in to talk to us. Maybe just as a, as a thought, we could just table this until the next meeting and give us a chance to review more clearly the negative economic impact category. And just be sure that we're not, you know, in a, in a real gray area here, just so that we're, you know, protecting the, you know, protecting the town and, you know, being good stewards with the money that we've been given to administer here. And maybe we could even just do a double check with a couple of other neighboring towns that we know have had more experience putting out their ARPA money to see how they might have treated something like this.
Did they put any restrictions on?
Yeah, are there any restrictions? Yeah.
I know Holyoke gave a lot of money to businesses.
Right, I mean, just to give us that for a category, I think you're right, John. We, I don't know that we were totally thinking about the private businesses and how that would, you know, come to us at the time. And so it's not bad.
And they didn't all show up at once.
No, they didn't.
Because then I think we would have seen the scale.
Sure, right.
And.
Yeah, and that's fine. And then we did specifically do the outreach to them. So I mean, you know, we have asked them to, to, you know, think about ARPA. So I have no problem with still keeping that category and continuing there. But I would maybe suggest that we could just take a, take a pause this meeting and not, not take action on this or and and come back to it next meeting. And I will do a little bit of research and see what I can come back with on that. How's that?
I'll send you this document. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Joy?
I haven't been involved with the private business applications, but looking through this application and the previous, the Bishista Orchards application, I feel like for me personally, it would be very helpful to have the business owner here because unlike the town applications, we don't have access to a lot of the information that we have these questions about. And so I feel like they're, you know, I'm going through this and I just have a lot of questions. And so it would be very helpful for them to be present.
We could invite the person for the next meeting and hope she could attend, yeah?
I have a document here that talks about addressing negative impacts, support to small businesses. I'll send it to you, but it, all three of the bullet points say COVID-nineteen.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It says aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality, and other impacted industries that respond to the negative economic impacts of COVID-nineteen.
What is negative, like, and how far does that reach? Like, we're still dealing with negative impacts now in regards to inflation. Like, are we, you know, where, how far does that go?
Exactly. And, you know, in a business, and I don't know exactly, I'm not remembering exactly when this business opened up, but it was definitely during COVID. Because I know that they were functioning, doing some of these things, yeah, twenty.
It was twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, yeah, exactly. So, um, anyway, so let's, if everybody's in agreement with that, let's just put that on hiatus for a moment. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Do we need a, a motion to just hold it till next time?
Do we need a motion?
Sure, let's just do that. All right. All right. Everybody in favor?
All right. Who seconded?
I don't think anyone did.
I sort of moved it.
Oh, second, I'll second it.
You second.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. And then we'll see if she could possibly join us at the next meeting as well. Okay, the next one we have is our financial software, I believe, Ed. The financial team.
Yes.
So that would be Ed, Bradley, and Jen.
So we have, basically, we have received two votes, one from Springbrook, which is the web-based platform for, which would be equivalent to our soft-right system. And the other is from Vada. And I will say they are two totally different systems. The Springbrook system actually encompass, would encompass everything. The Vadar system encompass encompasses most everything, except it does not have an H R module. So we would have to go out and use a, shall we say, H R or payroll company such as Harper's. Actually, that is factored into this particular cost, but, like I said, we would have to go outside the system. I will say this, I like, I like the idea of implementation and the data changeover from the Springbrook perspective because they already have the soft right. So I'm going to make the assumption that will be smooth. Right now, probably the biggest con for Springbrook in my mind is the fact that while they have soft-right customers in Massachusetts and they are currently implementing some of their clients to Springbrook, right now, there is not a Springbrook, Massachusetts client. So that kind of throws up a little red flag in my mind. And Vada, and like I say, in Vada, Vada is probably the most popular financial software company currently in Massachusetts, as far as the number of municipal clients it has. I am, the fact that we have to, would have to go out and engage in other companies for the H R or payroll piece, I'm not thrilled with, but I could definitely probably live with it. On either of the two. And and both of these incorporate, you know, because the water commissioners and water departments seem to be willing to change over from utilizing point for their existing billing and metering system. Both of these proposals incorporate that module. However, neither one of them incorporate, we're going to have to pay point to bring that information over to a new software company. My, my guess is, they know they have their clients, so I wouldn't be surprised if that cost were between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, which would be additional to these. At this point, Bradley, Jen, and I have had the demonstrations from the three companies. Both do far more than we existingly have, definitely. Both by taking away, shall we say, they will be less manually redundant. The reporting functions will be greater. And basically, at this point, the three of us have to coordinate our efforts and follow up with the references that the two different companies have given us and follow up and find out what our counterparts in those communities that are using these think and say about the product. But at this point, you know, what I have brought forward as far as the dollar amount is what would be the high-dollar amount if we did. as far as the dollar amount is what would be the high dollar amount if we did all the modules for everything with the, shall we say, higher priced vendor.
So Springbrook is actually higher priced than Vadar?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And just to, as we talk about the modules, just to recap for anybody who's listening, so the financial suite would be basically all of our accounting, our accounting work, payroll, and tax collection. Those are three different, different products that they would offer, right?
Correct. And, you know, currently we do use the payroll module. We don't really, we don't use the tax collection module. We actually use POINT on that side of things along with what I will say is utility building, billing for the water department.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And so they have tax collection and utility billing as separate, separate products then?
Yes.
There's a human resource management, one as well? And what is the employee self-service? What is that?
It's actually a module where you can set up a, an item on your website to have an employee, shall we say, sign in or whatever and be able to utilize, whether it's, you know, benefits or what have you for information.
Do time mark requests through employee self-service?
It's also where they would access their W2s and their pay stubs and all the mailing papers.
Got it. Okay, okay. All right. And what are the drawbacks about not having Springbrook in Massachusetts? I mean, you're not even just talking Western Mass, you're talking...
I'm talking all of Massachusetts.
Where are they if they're not here?
Other parts of the country.
Yeah.
Like I say, they have evolved over the years. They have bought up other financial software companies and what have you. West Springfield where I came from still has soft write at this point in time. They are, you know, they are also going through the same thing of, okay, what do, you know, they're looking to upgrade. So they're going through the same process. But like I say, when, when there's a, not a financial software base in, you know, currently in the municipality, that number one, you can actually go check on and say, well, you know, how does this information seem to come over and coincide with whether it's, you know, DOR reports or DESI reports or, or things like that. And it makes me, makes me a little anxious, shall we say?
And would either of these have any use for the assessors department, given our shorthandedness in the assessors department for...
Assessors would still use Vision, you know, however, the integration between Vision and whether it be Springbrook or Vadar for doing what we will call the bridge between the evaluation side and the actual billing side, I think will work very well.
So is Springbrook really two, the two collective? It's not an and or or? It's one for $73,000 and one for $55,000 as a package?
We're total.
Just based on what's in the, in the package before us, the $73,000 is just finance, payroll, and tax collection?
Right.
The $55,000 is utility billing?
Right, that's, yeah, the utility module.
Employee self-service and human resource?
Correct. Which actually with, actually either one of these companies, you know, my recommendation is that we do utilize all their modules.
Right. So what would be, if anything, what is the offsetting savings by eliminating? Because there's something in its place right now, right? Is there, I mean, right now you go to Unibank and you pay your property taxes, which creates an automatic feed that feeds into the treasury. So are we paying anything for that that is going to offset this? As an example. I get the utility one because water department's probably going to pick that bill up.
No, they're all going to have annual ongoing software support costs, which are actually more than we're currently paying. So basically, all, I would say it's more inefficiencies, both, like I say, and it's hard to, shall we say, quantify as individual A and department D. Now, on their computer does up a warrant summary, attaches it to, you know, a, the invoices, brings it to town hall, drops it at the accounting office.
That's, that's the efficiency of man hours, but you use, did you say Point Blank is currently the software being used?
Point.
Point is currently the software used for tax billing and also utility billing for the water department.
If we implemented this, that would go away.
That would go away.
And it costs, it costs less than this, but it's something. Right? Because if we approve this, we're committing, well, this will get to my next question, $128,000 annually going forward. But how long are these discounts?
Well, that's not $128,000 annually going forward. That's the conversion cost plus one, one year's support costs.
Okay, so whatever the support is, which is X.
Yeah.
Right.
Which they're giving us 50% discounts. How long are the discounts good for?
So going forward, let's see if I can find...
So the annual pricing is $21,700 on the first one and $11,008 on the second one?
Yeah, but that 21,000, I mean, those are all almost, except for the finance suite, everything's a 50% discount.
Correct.
So in theory, and they're proposing three years, so I'm guessing the discount's good for three years. So at the end of three years, should we anticipate double the price when the discounts go away? Otherwise, why have them in there? Why not just mark the price as what it is?
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at that.
And my other feedback is, I don't, I have a hard time with any organization that wants to retain payroll. The liability associated with it and doing the 941s and the W2s and the W4s timely and accurately. And in theory, if you're running it correctly, you're tying your, your workers' comp codes into it. It's got to be hours of work in that office that A, we're paying somebody to do, and we're also paying with the discount $5,000 a year for it, that through Harper's or Universal Payroll, you wouldn't even pay that much to outsource that.
I know the plug, the plug figure for Harper's in the Vadar is $7,000.
Yeah. I just say, there's a, you know, there's a huge liability in doing your own payroll in-house when, when we're not, most municipal treasurers are not payroll experts.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
So you're saying it might be better to go with a Vadar that would then outsource it to Harper?
Well, my guess is we, you could go, you could do Springbrook without the payroll function.
Oh, I see.
And you outsource that.
I see.
Yeah, I mean, the advantage in my mind is the fact that...
It's all tied?
Well, not necessarily that. I like the fact that you could do Springbrook and then it would be our choice to outsource the human resource module rather than buying into something that, that requires us to...
Oh, okay.
I like the choice.
So Vadar is limited. So Vadar comes without payroll or without human resource? Which one?
Correct.
Both of them?
They're tied together, yes.
Okay. So that comes without it. So we would have no choice but to outsource?
To Harper's or someone else, correct.
Whereas Springbrook, we could or could not if we decided to not take all the modules?
Right. The, shall we say, the Vadar's partnership is currently with Harper's. So we get all the efficiencies if we happen to choose Harper's rather than another company.
Have you been able to reach out to other towns or anyone that has used these to figure out what they're liking or not liking?
That is our next part, part of this project.
So I like the direction it's going in. I don't know that I personally am ready. You're not, you're not prepared to make a recommendation one way or the other at this moment. You're just providing an update.
I'm providing an update, but I also want to, shall we say, in my own mind, guarantee there are funds there when we do make a recommendation.
It all depends on how fast you act.
So you want to earmark X number of dollars for this, but we haven't decided on which company we're going to go with?
And like I say, I'm, as, as long as the select board knows this is our request, you know, and it's sitting in the back of their minds, I'm, I'm comfortable is saying, here's an update, you know, here's the two proposals and what they're looking like it's going to cost. Like I say, it's probably going to be about an additional, in my mind, probably $10,000 to pay the POINT, POINT for the conversion of the data. But like I say, within, I would say, by your, say, two meetings from now, we should have done, finished our homework with talking to the references.
Okay. And I'm just looking, I'm just trying to compare apples and apples here. So at Vadar, as I'm looking at this, the bottom line looks like $189,000, but that's a six-year contract. No?
Right. I mean, the Vadar comes out to, and again, this is conversion and annual cost. So in year two, you could drop down to the annual cost. The Vadar for equivalent to that $128,000, in my mind, is about 75, not counting the 10. So yes, the Vadar would be cost less than the Springbrook does.
Well, I mean, unlike, not unlike what we did, maybe with the public safety complexes, we put in a figure of $75,000, right, for that, without having any support background?
I don't think you're going to spend the $600,000 that's still out there in the, in the next month. So I just want to make you aware and not get...
Yeah. Well, it's good to get it on the radar. I mean, we were, I think we've been expecting it. We've certainly been talking about financial software upgrade for a couple of years now. So it's good to see that we've gotten, you know, the presentations and the financial team has heard these and tried to figure out what could be most beneficial to them. And I think a large part of it will be work efficiency, from what you're saying. I mean, it sounds like just the time spent not doing things manually will be a great advantage.
Like I say, there's two things. I think there's work efficiencies, number one. Number two, I think there's definitely by far more reporting options that we are able to, you know, utilize rather than what we are stuck, stuck for now in, in the CAND program. So...
Okay.
Sorry?
Yeah, ready? Go ahead.
Two points. One is I think that any system is only as good as people's knowledge and maximizing the use of the software. So if people don't revert back to old practices of doing things the more manual, old-fashioned way, that's important. And the other thing is, I just want to make sure that whatever software is selected maximizes all the departments. Because I know there's been a lot of discussion, Chris brought it up, about the assessors office. But also, what is the connection between permitting and the building inspector's office and then it translating over to assess value? I mean, are we making sure that we're maximizing its use to as many departments as possible? And do the modules in any way address any of those other departments other than the main three financial ones?
Well, they do in the fact that going forward and, no, we're not going to make the boards and committees do this because they don't have, shall we say, municipal computers or whatever. But, you know, going forward, whether it's town administrator's department or doing warrants for the select board or the highway department doing theirs or the COA doing theirs, they're going to be doing those warrant summaries and payrolls on the computer rather than by hand and then passing them off and having someone else.
Which, if we load the budget, will automatically eliminate any deficit spending.
True.
Because you won't be able to push it through.
Well, yeah, I mean, even now, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be able to do that because the red flags do come up when you overspend that account. But yes, that person that's actually entering that invoice and that warrant summary is going to get the same, same warning.
Right. And utilizing the system makes the department heads better because they'll see their line items. They'll know if they miss punch it. What do you mean I'm over, oh, I hit the wrong number.
Yeah.
Right. It really should be this and so that. On the Vadar one, they give you two payment options, which are tied to state contracts, right? So it can be flat, same amount every month for, every year for six months at 0% interest. Or we can pay the, you know, the conversion fee in the first year and then, and then take like a $7,000 reduction. We end up paying the same amount of money in both scenarios. But if, you know, six years, 0% financing, you know, what if we just front loaded it and paid it all at once and future value of money, they give us actually a discount.
There you go. Yep. That's the question.
That'd be negotiating points.
When we get there, we will. And I just asked them for the state contract because it's the easier way to go. But I also have to now take a look and say, I know that they're, we're using ARPA funds and there's special federal requirements for procurement, which I'm going to have to double check. So we might not be able to use the state contract anyway. But I, one other difference in the two systems, and, but we did load up Vadar is with the Springbrook system, we get basically infinite amount of users, you know. With the Vadar system, they actually charge us a different amount by the number of users that is utilized. So Bradley and Jen and I sat down and kind of went over that. And we cooked it up quite, quite a bit. I think originally when Jen and Vicki were looking at this, they had asked for like six users, I believe. I'll have to go back and double check my number. I think we asked for either 18 or 19 users in the Vadar quote this time, on the theory again that, okay, it's not just going to be the town administrator's office, the accounting office, and the collector treasurer's office using this, but we are going to push it out to our, at least our department so that they can utilize it on payroll and vendor warrants.
And Springbrook bought soft write, correct?
I wouldn't be surprised.
That's how they got in the mass market.
Yeah. I mean, and I can't remember at the time who Softwrite bought out probably, oh God, maybe 20 years ago. But I believe they brought out, bought out whatever financial software system we were using in West Springfield at that time.
Yeah. For, for what it's worth, I've used both Softwrite and Vadar.
Yeah.
And I would never use Vadar again.
Really?
But that's, and I can tell you what community is that uses it, off the public record.
Okay.
All right, good.
From a financial person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, department heads, different story.
Okay. All right. So at this point, are we, are we wanting to take action on this? We were going to let, not take a vote in terms of this, but do we want to...
You can just let it sit.
Just let it sit. We have the amount in there. We aren't adding the amount into any of our totals in terms of any approvals, et cetera. But we know we have at least the amount for, basically this is the Springbrook amount that you've put in there rather than the Vadar amount? Is that right? Yeah, okay. So we have that in there. So in the next go around, somewhere in the next couple of weeks, hopefully if we have more information, we'll come back and treat these that are still kind of on hold, okay? All right. Moving off of the ARPA applications and decision, we did ask for one quarterly report a little bit ahead of time, and that was the Board of Health quarterly report, which I believe has been distributed.
Yes.
And, I don't know, Ed, do you want to go through it? You've probably talked to the director more than we have, just in terms of the details that she's provided. This is for the...
This is for the three extra weekly hours for the health director. And I don't know, you know, how much in detail you want me to go through. But the amount that we awarded was $4,751.24. The balance remaining is $3,841.80. And this is the quarterly report for July, August, and I will say, shall we say, maybe half to three quarters... August, and I will say, shall we say, maybe half to three quarters of September. So.
I don't think you need to read it. We've, we've got it in terms of the, the various activities here. But have people had a chance to, to look at that? And are these the kinds of things?
I've read it. I mean, it is what it is. My recollection of my own individual question and what I thought this report was going to resolve is, what are the three hours per week that are being worked, i.e. day here, here are the three hours, and here, what did, what happened, or why, you know?
My understanding, and only because I've talked to Jerry a little bit about it, is that that varies, I think. But it's Monday through Thursday. To my knowledge, she's not working on Friday. Is that right, Ed?
Right. But.
Correct.
This is extra time on Mondays and Thursdays.
Monday through Thursday. And I guess it varies in terms of what occurs in that particular week. So it might be an extra hour on Monday or two hours on Thursday.
Again, you know, I don't, I don't, it's difficult to do this without talking about the individual. But the position is an hourly position, and they fill in an hourly time card. So therefore, somewhere on that time card, oh, here's where I did the extra hour or point five, and this is what occurred. So.
Right. So somebody would see that, yeah. On the warrant, yeah.
Right. I mean, because there's a couple of things on here where it's partaking in a phone call, a statewide phone call. My, my guess is that's happening during typical business hours, which the position's already working. So I don't know. I, I just, you know, and I also don't want to nitpick, and I don't want to focus in on it. I just thought it was pretty clear that, because this came up simultaneously to the salary people getting a half day on Fridays, that you say you need it, we're with you, we support you, but you've got to give the details. Here's the three hours this week, and this is why and what happened. And it, it should match up on the timesheet.
You could easily just get a copy of the timesheet. The timesheet would show the hours. The timesheet isn't going to show the activities that were done.
Right. But you're, you're asking that the reports show the activity. Well, it does, it does more or less, but it's interspersed during regular working out.
Yeah. I mean, your timesheet would have whatever hours were worked on whatever day.
Yes.
That would be extra hours. But you're not going to have any level of detail on your timesheet about the activities that were done.
I can, I can only go by my past experience. If my normal schedule was Monday through, Monday, let's just say Monday through Thursday, because that's what this position is, and it's 8:30 to 3:30. Right? That's, those are my times. So it's either I'm working before 8:30, or I'm working after 3:30. And then it's an exception to what my normal hours are. So therefore, to, to get my supervisor to sign off on it, I'd have to give a justification as to why I'm using those extra hours. So they would be on that timesheet, and the supervisor would be like, you're based at X, you've done three extra, we're allowed to do it. Do these three extra hours that you did comply with what we got the money for. Yes, I sign it. And off it goes.
Okay. Ed?
This is theoretical. And I'm going to pick on myself and say, I'm an hourly employee instead of a salaried employee. I work Monday through Friday, and we'll just say it's 8:30 to 4. COVID comes along. During my regularly scheduled hours, I partake of COVID updates from DPH, FEMA, MIMA, MMA. I did that during my regular hours. But now, because of that, I have regular duties that I wasn't able to get to. And now I have to do that before hours, after hours, on weekends. So now I'm putting down, oh, I did the, I checked the payroll after hours, or I wrote a contract after hours. Not, not related to the specific use or appropriation or approval, however, driven there by the approved use or appropriation.
Which you would just add that explanation. I, I don't see where the disconnect is happening here. That's a valid example you just gave. Because during my regular hours between here and here, I had to commit to COVID-19, which this isn't even COVID-related anymore because we're past that window. But because I had to do this, I took this work and it shifted up here. It, it's just a.
Yeah. I think if anything, maybe it's our payroll system that hasn't lent itself to that in timesheets. I mean, if anything, it's been a discussion. It's probably not, it's certainly not documented. I mean, you know, when Ed says, hey, I'm going to stay a couple of extra hours today because I've got to work on this contract, you know, we may have talked about it, but it's not.
But he's salaried.
He's salaried. But I mean, if that were an example. I mean, all I'm saying is, there's nothing that I've seen on any payroll when I was using, reading the warrants for any department about anybody.
Did you look at the underlying supporting documents, the timesheets?
Yeah, in terms, in terms of the timesheets, yes. I mean, the timesheets.
Yeah, they're just in time, in time, out, personal time, vacation.
So it's a daily time in, time out, you know, sick day, whatever, time off. But there's no, no place that I saw for anybody or, or requirement that I ever saw for anybody to put down what I did during these extra hours. If that's in the PQB manual, I have no idea. But I surely never saw it when I was signing off on warrants on anybody. I don't know.
Wouldn't that have been separate anyways, for the purposes of this? Does that make sense? Like, wouldn't she have been keeping track of what she was doing, those three extra hours for the purposes of our quarterly report?
Well, I think that's, that's part of what led into the quarterly report. Information is, these are, these are the activities that got accomplished, I assume. That's what I'm reading.
But not the hours. I see what you're saying.
Three hours. Yeah. Reidy?
I just wanted to make two points. And then one is, I just want to go on record as being against what's written on the ARPA tracker. It says the original FY23 budget wish list requested, which was moved to ARPA, three additional extra hours per week. There were a lot of requests on the wish list for the FY23 budget. So I just, I didn't, that's, that's not something I support, that idea, that it almost gives justification for the hours because it was on the wish list and then it was switched over to ARPA. But that's not actually the way I remember it happening. I thought there were somewhat two separate things that happened. That the wish list was not approved. The Conservation Commission, I think, was an example of one that was switched over to the ARPA. But this was, I thought, was more of an independent request. So when you, when it's listed as a wish list, it almost makes it sound like it's justification because it was on a wish list, which a lot of things were that didn't get funded by ARPA. And the second thing is, the way this was funded was something that was not the way it was intended by my vote when it originally happened. I've already belabored the point multiple times, and I don't plan on doing that anymore. So I just wanted to say that this was not what I intended when I voted initially for support of this position. And the emergency declaration is over, so I'm not sure why FY23, this is a request when it wasn't a request in FY 2021, 22.
Okay. I do, in my head, I do recall this being on the wish list for, for the budget when we had the two columns. And the original request for extended hours, remember, we had them go back and take a look at their existing budget to cover that. And they did find that they could cover that out of another line item. And then this was a separate request that was on the, on the budget spreadsheets that we got at the time. And you're true that not everything that was on the wish list got funded and not everything, you know, made it over to.
I thought, sorry, it was a separate request for additional funding. They had covered the additional in their own budget, and then they applied for additional ones. But it wasn't because it was on the wish list, because a lot of things were on the wish list and were not funded by ARPA.
Mm-hmm. Got it. Okay. All right. So what, what we had said was that we had, well, we had approved this amount at the time, and we had authorized the release of one fourth of it, I believe it was.
Right. Quarterly increments contingent with reports.
And that we wanted this report a little bit earlier so that we weren't coming up against the quarter, because the way I scheduled the quarterly reports was to have people finish their quarter and then give us a report within two weeks later, which made it the October 15 deadline for everybody else who's out there that needs to get reports into us. But we asked the Board of Health to give us this report earlier because this would implicate whether or not we had money, we would authorize money to be released for the next quarter, which begins very soon. So what is anybody's thinking here? I mean, I think we have to figure out where we're going with this. I don't think we're in the position of trying to micromanage everybody's daily schedule and budget, personally. You know, I mean, I don't, we had the discussion whether we all agreed or understood it at the time. Maybe we didn't. But I find it hard to go back on a decision that's been made.
Well, we, I mean, we, you're right. We did make the, a vote. We did approve it. We approved the first 90 days. And, and we would, and then we encumbered the rest of the money.
Correct. Right. Which is where we are.
So one could interpret it that without further action by us, this ends. And the encumbered money falls back for, because they were, in my mind, they were giving a specific answer or specific requirements to file the quarterly report. And it was to meet certain standards. If there's an interpretation of that that's different, okay, so be it. You know, I, I'm more, more than willing to give the Chair of the Board of Health the benefit of the doubt. You know, she, she performed, she prepared this list and signed off on it. I'll take her, at her word that she has underlying documents that meets the good faith effort. But I don't know about this going forward, in my view. So I, that's just my take. I don't know what everybody else wants to do.
Joy, Francine?
Yeah, I'm looking at this and trying to sort, I thought what we asked for, what was, that, those three hours, what did you really dedicate your activities to? And I see these all interspersed all day long. And I think we were looking just for a little more specificity about how the time is used. But, you know, as, as, as Ed was saying, you know, these things come up and they have to get done. And, and if, you know, it, it rolls over into that extra three hours, some of the things that we would normally expect to be done during the, you know, the, the regular time. So it's really, it's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to, to evaluate it, quite honestly, for me.
Yeah. And I think, you know, in terms of the, the reporting, if you, if you remember, I did a revised letter to the Board of Health noting the requirement to get in a quarterly report earlier than others because of how we had laid out this decision and the timeframe of it. I don't believe I was, I think I asked for the level of specificity, but I did not go into any great detail in terms of, these are the kinds of things we want you to report on. So perhaps, again, that's a error on my part in terms of communication. But I don't know what level of specificity is required that I think somebody else is going to have to help me understand that.
Well, no, Chris, you made, you made a valid point. You know, it's, again, there's a huge difference between salary and hourly people. Hourly people have to be held to a much higher standard only because of the master of the law requirements of the triple damages. You, you have to account for everything. So when they're signing that timesheet and they're printing on those extra hours, there, there should be an explanation there. Now, granted, past practice here in Towne, Southampton, apparently from what I'm hearing tonight is, we threw that out the window and haven't required that. So, you know, I'm, I guess I'll retract my statement. I'm willing to, you know, hold my nose and let the $3,800 go. But I won't support any additional hours going forward after this without clear, decisive documentation for the hourly employees. Salary is different. Salary, you take the salary, you assume you're going to work 168 hours a, a week to get it done. And some, which we do a little differently here, too. You know, because there's a lot of salary people here that they often get up to the podium and say, well, I only have so many hours to do this. That's not why you're on salary. You know, that's all part of negotiations. And in theory, a salary person should be doing about 60 hours a week. Some weeks, they're going to do 30, and they'll get out. But it, there's a bigger problem than just this one individual case. And I don't want to make this situation, you know, the, the scapegoat here. So.
Okay. Joy?
No, I, I mean, I just have a lot of questions. But if the board feels comfortable moving forward, then I, I do as well.
What's your question, Joy?
Like, for example, the vaccine clinic, how long was that? Was it three? Was it the extra three hours? Did she work the extra three hours Monday? Like, that's, that was on a Saturday. So just things like that.
There were very few vaccines given out. It was run by the Northampton Health Department. But I think that, you know, that there needed to be a Southampton, you know, Board of Health person there, whether it be one of the board members.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not justifying her being there. I'm just wondering what the hours were spent.
Right. If we're asking for hours, it should be specified, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
So some of these are just one-time activities, not, not a picture of consistent.
Yeah, they're not recurring.
See, one of the things that I would have recommended a while ago, and it's beyond, you know, the, whatever the expression is, a horse is already out of the barn, is once, it was never my intention to bypass the PQB and the regular way of saying, we're just going to increase your hours. I think giving a COVID sort of bonus would have prevented the things that are currently happening from happening. But as soon as we realized that it wasn't being handled the same way, and it's basically counted as regular hours because, and subject to all benefits and retirement, then I think I would have preferred to have gone back and redistributed the money differently. Then we wouldn't be discussing what hours and what activities. It would be, this is similar to the premium pay situation, where we didn't have to increase someone's hours. Just, you know, once you do things like that, you open yourself up, I think, to problems.
And I guess I'm not seeing how we could go back and do that kind of track that you've just proposed at this point in time. I mean, do you see that? I mean, I.
Well, we had, I mean, it was brought to our attention in the second week of the fiscal year because of an error on the payroll. It would, the extra hours were added to the operating budget as opposed to ARPA. So at that particular point, it was realized, the Treasurer let us know that because it's regular hours, it has to be treated as regular hours. So I suppose we could have done something at that particular point. But anyway, I'm, I've said enough about it. I don't support it.
I think, I think the question is, is, one, we, if we fail to do anything right now, there's no more money. So either we release another 90 days or the next three quarters and say that this is an acceptable format going forward, or, or we remain silent, and then the funding stops because the, the PPP form that came through, it was only approved provided that the funding was in place. And since we print a stopgap here, so you get the first quarter and then we hold it.
Mm-hmm. I mean, there is an option of, of doing just another 90 days, if you'd like to do that. And that would get you October, November, December. That's, you know, theoretically, I would think if we're heading into the winter months, we would be having more activities to deal with COVID. But, or another six months, whatever.
Well, you're right about that. Because there may be an uptick and much more activity.
Not without documentation.
I, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I'm just saying that, that may be the situation that we all find ourselves in.
Well, but going forward, then, if, now that it's a little bit clearer in terms of what we would like to see, that there has got to be some, something to the person that signs the timesheet, talking about the extra three hours were spent doing X, Y, and Z, if that's a requirement we have.
So I like that. My hesitation with that is, is we're, we're passing a rule right now that only applies to one individual. So I don't like that.
Exactly. I agree.
Although this doesn't apply to anybody else right now, because there's nobody else in this situation.
I mean, I, I feel like we ought to at least get the monies available through, through the winter season, personally. Through another 120 days. So that would take it through March. But then could just, you know, clarify the level of expectation that we have and hope that that would be understood well, to try to give us more information about what happens during those three hours, why they're really necessary.
I mean, honestly, one of the things that I thought I would pull out of this is whether or not, seeing these, these times and on here and the interruptions and all that, and seeing the pattern, would that be enough on the next round to justify a permanent adjustment to the spot? Because it's kind of like doing the time study, right, that, you know, versus the, right down to 15 minutes. So when you have to operate outside of it, what's, what's going on? It's just, but, but again.
Okay. Any further thoughts, Francine? If not, let's decide where we're going. Do we have a motion for any, any action at this point in time?
I'll make a motion to approve another 90 days.
And I would second that.
Okay.
And to be clear, 90 days would be up to the end of December.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. All right.
And for a similar report to be filed.
And, and look at December, and as Chris suggested, get us through the winter through March.
Right.
Look at that timeframe.
All right. So then here we are again with my report schedule being cockeyed. Also in the middle of holidays, the end of December. Also in the middle of holidays, the end of December.
We just have to, we will have to put together a definitive letter defining this one report, just like we did previously.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right, so we have a motion for 90 days. And that's been seconded by Francine, right? Okay, if no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Four to one, motion passes. All right, thank you. Next, Assistant Town Accountant updates.
Yes, and Bradley did receive some additional applications, and we are starting the interview process later this week.
That's good. How many applicants?
How many applicants or how many viable applicants?
I mean, how many, about how many interviews are you going to have? At least three choices?
We've got two scheduled this week.
Okay.
So the open positions right now within general government right now are the PA, and I think there's a volunteer coordinator in the senior center and the assistant town accountant. Is there any other vacant positions in the building?
The Assessor.
Well, Conservation Agent.
Library Director.
What's that?
Library Director.
Not in this building, but yeah.
Is there anything else you can think of in terms of being able to recruit for positions? Or it just seems like that there's such a huge length of time in hiring and replacing. And I'm just wondering if there's anything else that we can do as a town to recruit for open positions, short of having an HR department?
$5,000, $10,000 signing bonus? I mean, other than that, I'm seeing, you know, not only municipalities, but, you know, businesses.
Oh, yes.
Going through the same thing. I just saw it, I can't remember who it was, but there's some municipality doing, you know, like a job, whatever you call it, you know, forum, conference, or, you know, whatever. You know, just have people come in and put in applications.
Like a job fair.
You know, Hoyok's giving $10,000 signing bonuses, and they're putting in a vesting schedule over three years in order to get it. So you don't get it all on day one. And they're using the ARPA money for that. I think that's a sticky wicket, because what are you going to do to everybody that's been here?
Retention.
Oh, yes, that's the hard part, yes, exactly.
It's very difficult. I just didn't know if there was anything else that anybody thought, because there is a long gap.
Yeah, no, I'm hoping that maybe these will yield a viable candidate. I mean, I would love to have somebody else upstairs and not leave Bradley kind of alone in his office up there. I mean, I think he and Ellen got along well and worked well together. So it's always beneficial to have somebody working with you, I think. So the sooner we can get somebody the best.
I can solve that. I can swap offices with him if you'd like. Then I'll be, and Judy will keep me company, so at least I won't be alone up there.
You're not swapping offices until you organize your office.
That's my way of organizing my office, John.
Leaving it?
If Bradley would quit the next day, if he got your office.
All right, moving on. All right, let's take a look at this. We finally have this PVPC Shared Human Resources Draft Report that came out through the, this is from the product from the DLTA grant that we got that I know both Francine, John, and Ed have been involved in somewhat with the PVPC and the Collins Center. And this was a grouping of five towns, Blandford, Chester, Goshen, Southampton, and West Hampton.
And Worthington joined, subsequent to the original award.
To identify short and long-term HR needs and determine the way forward. So this is the report we've been waiting for over time. And so I don't know who's had the most contact. Francine, have you had the most?
Well, I have attended almost all, I've attended all of the meetings. I have to say that, first off, it's kind of disappointing. This report is like six months overdue. And what I find most interesting in the report is the data, the comparison among the towns. I looked at that and I thought that was terrific. But that doesn't get me to, you know, a decision about what model. Although I do want to make a comment on one category of report that represents Southampton, and that's the one for the number of employees on page 15. If you look, nine, 10, 195, 48, 25. I mean, a lot of, first of all, I would back the school out of that number. I know they're employees of the town, but they, we don't, they're not an HR obligation, so to speak, for the town. So I would estimate that that's probably 50% of that 195 are school employees. So, because I'm looking at the formula, if we go forward with this, of how the dues or the payments are going to be prorated. And if it's anything like what we live with with our, you know, with the Hampshire Regional, I mean, this is like 400% of everyone else. So our portion would be quite substantial. And the other eye-opener here is that, and I'm not saying that they're incorrect, that the annual salary for this position would be in the $120,000 category, which far exceeds anything. And our portion of it, based on these numbers, could be something like 70% for someone who would work two or three days. So it doesn't leave me with clear path in terms of selecting a model. But I wanted to, we wanted everyone to see this so that you could kind of be brought up to speed of where it is. Look at what some of the proposed choices are for us at a time when perhaps we still have input, because this is only a draft. If we could have some input into this report, if you could envision other ways of doing things or other, you know, this would be the time to do it. And that's why this is very timely, because we're meeting again in early October, later in October. But we have to get the information to the author, to Mary from the Collins Center, in order to have it reflected in this report. Whether it's our concerns based on the data, whether it's our concerns based on the model that she's proposing. I think the outcome of this would be one more step in terms of another study. Would be putting together a pilot based on these models, hoping that it's grant-funded, so up to now, we get to refine our methodology a little bit more in our plan for how this would work without having to pay for it. But eventually, we know we need, not eventually, we need HR services immediately. And eventually, whatever we find ourselves in, we're going to be permanent, not, we're going to be obligated to pay for it out-of-town funds, the grant money's going to go away. So while we can still experiment, if we looked at, and now it's asking you folks to talk about how you would, what model you would envision working best for Southampton.
Just one question on that, before we go to the models. On page 15, when you mentioned the full and part-time employees, so you're suggesting that the 195, that we back out the school, but that wasn't, was that part of the, part of the instructions, or is it that you're just saying that that was...
I think that's the other thing, is this report needs to note who submitted these answers.
Well, Ed would have done the survey.
Well, and I don't disagree with that. But was it the TA in every community that did it? Based on some of these answers, I don't think so. I think in some cases, there's a Treasurer, there's the voice of a Treasurer coming through outside of Southampton.
I mean, just for ours, and, you know, I got that 195 from, yeah, our Collector Treasurer's got the records. But, okay, yeah, the school is about 100 employees, that's half of that. Now, just think about this, you got 100 left. John and I have had this conversation, John's brought it up here, I brought it up here. How many individuals that don't work every day or even every month does the fire chief have on his active roster? That usually floats around 50.
Then we need, we need some way of the...
I think your point, Francine, I think if they're going to look at an FTE count, that we would have to take that, and I think every community would have to do that and break it down. Here's our FTE count, here's the FTE count at school. Here's our paid-on-call fire, because I've got to imagine some of these other towns aren't even paying the fire, right? You know, but you're right, there's an issue there, because there's workman's comp that follows that.
Yeah, but I think the role of HR is so huge. I mean, it includes so many things from hiring and recruiting and benefits and family leave. If you think of all the things that are distributed to department heads at this point, I think that one of the steps would be to actually list exactly what functions the HR person would be assuming, would it be taking the place of an entire PQB department? You know, are the department heads still going to be doing certain things? Is the Treasurer still going to be doing all the paperwork for benefits? So I think the first thing would be to figure out exactly where the line will be between all the different HR functions, because HR is huge.
The other thing that jumped out on me on this, and I can put this in email, the way I interpreted the reading is, at least under Southampton, when it asks when open enrollment meetings were happening, it says not during COVID. So that kind of struck me as odd that we're actually doing the open enrollments here in Southampton, because that's part of being in the Hampshire County, whatever that custodium is up there, that they handle all the benefits, and I know they're holding open enrollment meetings. So it could just be the type of words used, maybe.
But still, I mean, every municipality, when the open enrollment comes around, that's the open enrollment period for, whether it's Worthington, Southampton, what have you. And that's, when it's open, so you have to announce it. And then employees that either want to change their particular policy or whatever are coming back to, you know, the Treasurer, in our case, the Treasurer Collector.
Okay, but there's another community that I have experience with, is it was a matter of coordinating the emails. Like, when I was their Treasurer for a year, I got an email from the health group up in North, I can't think of the name of it. But the collaboration, right, for Hampshire County, and they would say, "Here's your documents, here's what needs to go out." And you sent it out, those that didn't have town email accounts, all right, then you had to mail it out. But it went out, and the forms came back, and it was a matter of processing paper, not actually holding open enrollment meetings. Where if somebody had questions, the expectation wasn't that I was going to be able to answer their questions. It was, "Here's the name and number, or when you can go to the two public meetings to get your answers." So it's more direction and not actually requiring somebody here in town all to have the expertise of a PPO or an HMO.
Yeah, no, and I guess I thought, whenever the open enrollment happened, that Jen was forwarding that information to the town employees to say...
She does.
Yeah. Now, she does have to do all the paperwork, because we do payroll in-house.
Right, right.
Francine, do you think while we're still connected to this project funding, whatever, that we'd be able to, like, I think the next step, I agree, would be to get a grant? I think we're going to be more eligible to get a grant if it's a regional grant. Is, will we have the opportunity through PVPC to determine how many staff hours would be involved if it includes recruiting and onboarding, setting up interviews versus just other HR things involving benefits? Like, will they be able to generate a list of, like, a long list of HR functions and then equate them to, you know, ranges of FTEs?
Yeah, I think there is already a formula in place for them to calculate that, to estimate the about...
That would be helpful, I think.
What percentage of the person we would need. And that's why I was concerned with our large number, because it would just put us in a different category than the rest. I guess I didn't realize how small some of the other towns were compared to us. It's just amazing.
We're the big dog in this one. And I mean, if it was, and I don't, there probably isn't out there, but, you know, reverse the whole thing. Is there a city around us that has excess capacity in their HR department that wants to sell us a day in an intermunicipal agreement?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, and then we become the small dog, you know, type of thing. But, I mean, yes, we are definitely, much like we are in the regional school system, we happen to be the big dog here.
Well, I think with this, the way I'm understanding this, they've come up with a couple of recommendations. I mean, on page 11, we've got the models that they're looking at, and on page 12, there's two recommendations. So, you know, the whole shared full-time employee model one, nobody, other towns were not agreeing to that at all. Model two, us maybe being the host town and having an intermunicipal agreement with the other towns, which would get us, maybe somebody here a couple of days, two, three days a week, and then firming it out to the other towns. While, again, that may be quite beneficial to us, it sounds like here that other towns were not excited about being on the receiving end of that, reading the comments that are in here.
No, I can, actually, from the memory of the meetings, I attended, most of the other communities, if not all, the other communities wanted à la carte, via hour. You know, charges by hour when we call up and need help.
On an as-needed basis.
Yeah.
Wanted somebody to be available.
Yeah, so that's model four.
That would obligate, I mean, in the event that that was something that we went for and they didn't use the lives of services as much as we needed them to for our, you know, or anticipated. We were really obligated for the tour more than what we anticipated.
So I do, there are, there are HR professionals out there. Whether you can drill it down to a municipal expert, which is a whole different beast.
Right, right.
But my, I would say there are that you can contract per day. So if you take $100,000 annual salary, five days a week, $20,000 a day, rough numbers. So we would contract $40,000 a year here, every Tuesday and Wednesday, 52 weeks out of the year. And, you know, what you do on your other days is your business. If you want to consult with these other communities, go for it, but, you know, here's our commitment. And it might even be something where, I think that's too much time in two years. I think having somebody here two days a week for 52 weeks for a two-year cycle could do a lot of the cleanup, and then, because they authored a lot of these things, could go down to a one-day-a-week commitment.
Because the school does its own thing, right?
Yeah, so, which is interesting here, because being on the school side, the, they're, we're, as one of 35 voices, we're pushing for an HR expert in central office to deal with the same issues here. And there, we have, you know, what are there, 500 employees if you add up all the schools? But they have the same issue there.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, what they've got here, then, the third model, the contracting with a vendor on a fee basis. And here, this one, I thought originally sounded more likely, as I read it. You know, the 1,500 to 3,000 flat fee per month, paid by each municipality for total annual cost of 18,000 to 36,000, depending. But that was a flat fee for having somebody and to do a lot of the same things that Rini was talking about, from onboarding to, you name it. All the traditional tasks, I guess, one would associate, you know, with an HR person. But I'm gathering that the model that seems to be recommended here is model four, which is the on-demand billable hour, right?
Yeah.
For everybody except for Southampton, that's what they want. But that was the outcome of the meeting.
That's what the other towns want, right? That's where they are, so...
They want to treat it like legal counsel. When I have an issue, I'll call you, kill me for the hour, and I don't want to do any...
Right, and if it's going to be 125 an hour, then that's what they're willing to pay when they only need him for five hours a year or something, right?
Yeah, it would be hard to retain somebody, having some minimum...
Right, I don't know how you'd get somebody that would be interested in doing that if they didn't have an assured minimum amount of work or...
It'd have to be a firm.
It would have to be.
And that price is going to be too low for a firm, because it's going to be a Boston.
Yeah, and you don't have overhead properly built in there anyway, too, so. So, but looking at the recommendations on page 12, I mean, I'm gathering they want our feedback on this report.
They do.
So they're recommending a study committee, develop a pilot program, and engage a firm or individual contractor with a retainer or on-demand model for six months to a year, with looking at tracking the work and maybe a grant funding. So, yeah, possibly, I mean, the only, the only grant funding, oh, they mentioned it down here, is the Community Compact Best Practice, that would be the only one I would think of.
And they also, Collins did say that they, and PVPC, both said that they would assist, they would actually do the grant writing.
That's great.
Really?
More power to them.
On, on our behalf, yeah, because it's work for both of them.
Yeah.
So I'd be, I'd be, I mean, I'm in favor of the approach I laid out. It's figuring out what we need for two days a week and not necessarily worry about trying to fit in all the other communities. This, this is what we're doing, because it was what our town needs. See, PVPC, if you can find its grant money, that's great, let's move forward with this. And say, you know, if we're using these two days, hey, these other three days are open. If you want to do à la carte, you go ahead and come in, but we're not going to wait for you guys, and we're not going to come down to your level.
So we're not choosing any of their models, is what you're saying?
I feel like it's a hybrid of three of them. Like, it's kind of part-time, but it's independent contractor, but you have these set days.
I know.
Yeah. Cause then that.
A sec, Ed, I go down there.
I'm actually going to feed off something John just said. What if we became the lead community?
Yeah.
Took the person for two and a half days a week, split that for the other two and a half days per week with the school district, and I mean Hampshire.
Yeah.
And John, and, and John knows why I'm saying that we become the lead rather than the school becomes the lead.
And I do think getting the, if, if this group here could provide a comprehensive list of HR functions, because I think there might be some departments that want to retain, or we don't have the hours to have them do X, Y, and Z, but at least if we have a comprehensive list of HR functions, we'd at least be able to say, okay, we're going to have you do this group of things, and we'll continue doing the other things the way we're currently doing it.
Right. But they mentioned them somewhat, they talked about the classical.
What page you on?
On page two, they talked about the ones that were sort of mentioned as the, this, the critical function, so hiring, including advertising, recruiting, onboarding, retention, day-to-day issues, supervision, performance reviews, disciplinary measures, grievances, job classification, benefit assessment, salary range, job descriptions, leave of absence.
So a lot of that is providing training to supervisors, they can better do that job.
Right, so it's a combination of things.
Yeah, they're not going to be doing performance reviews.
Right. So it's a variety of things there, and everybody not having their.
Like collective bargaining agreements, I'm not sure that that would be the case, really.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that, that would help in the case of our other departments, yeah.
There's a lot more, though, like, you know, it'd be good to have, that was a pretty general.
Yeah, the only ones they talked about, I think more about that was just over on page seven, they talked about the traditional functions of benefits administration, and then they talked about the strategic areas, which are beyond the onboarding and payroll kinds of things, which is more the long-term vision of where are you all going with whatever HR development, right?
And in theory, I mean, if this person comes on for X amount of time, it'll have a direct correlation to efficiency across the board, because this person, you know, this person doing, dealing with workers' comp audit means Ed doesn't have to get involved with it.
Yeah.
Right? And, and so he can do, I mean, he's still got to see it and bless it, so he doesn't have to do all the work to it, doing the, the wage studies analysis, or reviewing the job descriptions to make sure that the, the correct pronouns are used, and it's consistent across the board, you know, for those that have been updated since the 70s.
Yeah.
And, and I'll stick up for, it's Jen that deals mostly with that workers' comp audit, so.
Okay, so our, our suggestion is, I'm hearing one from John and one from Ed, kind of a mixture of the two. I mean, how soon do we have to get them some feedback, Francine?
Well, the, the next meeting is October.
Took three months to get it to us.
Yeah, as soon as possible. The next meeting is.
It's sometime after.
It's in October, it's a Monday.
Seventeenth.
Yes, the 17th. I have too many things, yes, the 17th at 8:30 AM. So if we could get it so that she could modify this report, put it in this report, so that everyone can consider this at the same time, when we're, you know, making decisions about what the next step should be, and how we're going to play in this, how, what our role is going to be, what our interests are.
Do we have to give them, suppose we come up with model, whatever this is now, model five, that was ours, do we have to give them justification for why we would not follow their recommendation of model four?
No, no, I just say, you know, based on all this information, we've come up with an, with an alternative model, and that is a, whether it's five-day or four-and-a-half-day employee, two equivalent days of which Southampton would absorb, two and a half, we, we would, we would go out and try and coordinate with the regional school district to get them to take the other half, which leaves a half a day available for the other towns on an ongoing basis, which, which then makes up a 37 and a half hour work week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That, and, and if they agree based on the formula of employees, number of employees to.
Yeah, here's your fixed recurring.
The FTE, yeah.
So that we, so we can offer a package to somebody for a two-year period as a trial.
Right.
So they know, hey, there's money here, I've got this job for two years.
Right. Yeah, I think we'd have to have something so that we could guarantee, you know, somebody, or to attract somebody that would be willing to come for longer than, you know, a six-month pilot doesn't.
No, that was, that was really to see how well everybody plays together and how we share.
But you know that first, the first 30 days, it's just going to be a dumping ground.
Yeah.
Here's every single thing I want fixed.
Exactly. Person's going to be buried by then. All right, so we want to make that a proposal.
So, well, I mean, are you, are you, are you guys comfortable with, with just going, going back to the original three that have been working on it and drafting up some sort of goal five?
I mean, I would.
And sending that in.
I was about to say that I, I would be in favor of the, the folks that have been on the committee to go ahead and, and draft something along those lines, as we've discussed, that seems to meet our needs better, and, you know, not, not totally leaving the other ones by the wayside, but at least helping them understand that.
Yeah, so with that, if it's the three of us, I would recommend that we get together, we get together via Zoom, just to put this, the language around this, to make the proposal to them that we all agree with, and, and ship it off to, to Eric and to Mary, in, in as short a time as we can.
Okay. So.
Sounds like a good idea.
Motion is to let the three committee members, Francine, John, and Ed, put together, meet and put together a recommendation.
Do you guys agree with that?
Well, this is my motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion. Well, you, we'll find out if they agree.
Right, you're right.
I'm trying to make the motion for a change, which I never do, but I will.
The only time you argue question.
I know, I know.
I was asking if they agreed with what I proposed.
Well, I'm not hearing any, you know. I'm not hearing anybody shouting against you.
Nobody's, nobody's seconding it yet, go ahead, let's hear it.
Yeah, okay, all right. So the motion, I think, was to authorize, or whatever, to, what's the right word, to delegate the responsibility to the three current members of the HR committee working with PVPC to draft, craft a recommendation for what would be.
A different model?
A different recommendation or alternative model, language that would describe an alternative model that would benefit Southampton in particular, I guess.
Yeah.
So, something along those lines. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, nobody's opposed.
So next steps, though, we need to have immediate, as soon as possible.
You guys.
Okay.
Work it out. Okay. Next, financial audit planning, our FP, oh, we have that in here, yep. Financial audit planning, kidoki. So this is going out as a request for proposals for fiscal years 22, 23, and 24.
Get a couple of edits.
On the first, on the first page, you really want the response back by February 3rd of 2023?
No, I haven't really figured it, I have not refined any of the final dates, so.
All right, that's just a placeholder. It's a year from now.
It's a little far, yes.
Well, February 2023 isn't that far away.
Well, you've got November 23.
You have November.
November 3 on the cover page. November 3.
At the bottom.
On the first, on the cover page.
I have, yeah, I just kind of left those there and said, okay, once I get the approval, I will go back in and, and, and again, it would be about a month from.
Yeah, so just circle the 23, though, that it's not year 23.
Maybe circle the one.
Yes, it's fiscal 23.
Well, but.
Well, speaking of fiscal, can you turn to page two?
Why are you turning to page eight?
Yeah, yes.
Title page.
Yeah.
Request.
Oh, yeah, request, spelled wrong.
Request.
Yeah, that needs to be fixed.
Spelling typo.
Request?
Typo.
R-E-R.
Extra R.
I think this is something he did at nine o'clock at night.
Yes.
It was one o'clock in the morning.
Okay, yeah, Rini.
On page two, under one, the last paragraph, shouldn't that be July 1, 2021?
Where?
Fiscal year, the, the financial audit shall cover the fiscal year starting July 1.
It should be 2021, correct?
Number the pages.
It's going to be fiscal 22, so it'd be July 1, 21 would be the starting date, right, of the fiscal year, third line down on page.
In other words, you only have two years in there, and you want three, so it should be July 1, 2021.
Under services requested. All right?
Yeah, I think you're on the wrong page.
I found the, what page?
Page two.
Two.
On the number one, C1, the last paragraph.
Oh, C1.
Says the financial audit shall cover the fiscal year starting.
It's going to be.
July 1, 2022.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Which is this year? No.
Yeah, starting 20, July 1 of 2022 is actually fiscal year 23.
23.
Okay, then this only covers.
So the ending, the ending date is wrong. If 22 is correct, then the ending date is 22.
Be 25.
Right?
Yeah.
If you're talking fiscal.
Oh, no, it'd be.
He's talking the fiscal year, that's, that's the.
Yeah, financial cover the fiscal year starting July 1, 21.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. 21.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's 21 and 24.
Right, and ending June 30 of 2024.
Okay, so it's 22, 23, 24.
Yep.
Yeah, so 22 is the.
As Chris knows, I had a real hard time.
Okay.
Between the fiscal years and the calendar years on this one.
Well, just keeping that, you know, that we're, we're auditing, auditing fiscal years, but we want to be sure that we're not crossing our dates on certain things, yeah.
I just had a couple of other typos, a few.
Do we, do we need 12 copies?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, submit 12 copies? I don't think we need 12 copies, do we? On page, on number two, D2.
I mean, we need enough for finance, and we need enough for a select board. So finance is fully staffed, that's five, five, 10.
And then.
Ed needs one that's.
Town administrator, town accountant, treasurer, collector. That's 13 now.
Oh, my.
And do you give one to the assessors, since they're, that person will be on the finance team? Now we're at 14.
Well, if they give a good quality PDF, I'll take that version.
Maybe we could just have ours electronically?
Well, there you go, you keep. You know what? We'll do six and, and electronic.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that, because that's way too many.
Yep.
All right, that's $500 savings.
Yep. And is that under E2 then, does that jive with the five copies? So that's five different, five different proposals, I mean, five sets of proposals, is that what you're asking? So that goes to treasurer and collector and.
Right.
D2, okay, you've got five there, yeah, okay.
And then, going back up to C2, I had highlighted and finance committee, so do you want that to say select board and finance committee, or select board and the select board has the ability to ask the finance committee if they want to attend?
Or can we say a joint meeting?
Well, that would be what select board and finance committee would actually be.
I would, yeah, I would, I would leave it the way it is.
Yeah, and a joint, I could say in a joint meeting.
I think it's fine.
I got you.
I'd leave them in there, yeah. Anybody else see other, other thoughts and things here?
I have, I have a couple of things further on down. Under the comparative evaluation criteria, I'm sorry, there aren't any page numbers.
Yeah.
What section, do you have a section?
Please.
It's, let's see.
Ask them to submit their, their response with.
Well, it starts with highly advantageous and then advantageous, it's comparative evaluation criteria.
Yeah, it's on, uh.
I don't know what page it is in the packet, it's 103.
This one, Francine.
Under the, it's a whole page of evaluation criteria.
It says comparative evaluation, do you have that, Ed?
Minimum evaluation, yep.
Yeah, the, the second one says comparative.
Right.
I just have a question, see, see where it says highly advantageous, see the last sentence, says the, the proposal must show an in-depth ability to examine and evaluate the internal control system and, I think that's supposed to be clearly state.
It is correct.
And then the same statement that happens in the next category where it says advantageous, the last sentence again says and clearly state.
Yep.
Good catch.
It's all, all of them.
Yep, because this was used once, at least once before, without catching that.
And you got it over on the next one, right? Not advantageous?
Yeah, it's under not advantageous.
Three times.
Just back on one on the section D, where we were before with the five copies, 12 copies. Down on point seven, last point on D, final audit report will be completed by March 31, 2023. Is that just talking about?
That would be the first year.
Okay, so.
Should you just say by March 30th of every year thereafter?
Yeah, that might be easier than, I'm a little leery of putting in years in here, because then we get confused with fiscal years.
Right.
And we risk making a mistake, so.
But then the onus is on us to deliver the information.
Well, yes, obviously.
So we have to set a deadline for ourselves and live with it.
Correct. But the final audit, if we say the final audit report will be completed by March 31st of each, each contract year or something.
Right.
Or each fiscal.
And that, and that actually would line up with when we're required to do our financial statements for our borrowing.
Yeah. So that would be one, one thought I would have there. Any other?
I have a comment about the end, the debarmant certification.
What?
Debarment?
Is it?
Disbarment?
Disbarment.
It says debarmant. It says City of Waltham.
Well, now we know where you stole it from.
Yeah, three different places it says City of Waltham.
Says what?
City of Waltham. See in the paragraph there?
I don't know where you are.
Under debarmant.
Under debarmant.
Is it debarmant or disbarment? This lawyer down at the other end down there, Joy?
Disbarment. If it's in regards to license of practice, it's disbarment. It's...
Is it on one of the forms?
Yes, the debarmant, debarmant is a reference.
I don't know if it's...
You've got the City of Waltham in there about three different times.
Yeah. You see where, are you in the debarmant?
Bar.
Yeah, there's three references to City of Waltham.
Yep.
And then if you wanna keep going from there where it says contract and general conditions, appendix A, I think there's some words missing. Under five. Or maybe he just needs to have a date filled in.
You gotta fill in the date, yeah. Shall be fully performed on a before.
Okay.
Yeah, a date has to be filled in there.
Give him the draft contract?
Uh, the copy of the actual, yeah, contract and general conditions, the second page.
Yeah, it's just a draft for them to see what they're gonna sign.
Yeah, but there's, I think that you just have to put a date in there before it's sent out. Do you see on page two of that contract and general conditions?
Number five.
Number five.
Terms of contract.
Yeah.
You see where the space there? I think you just have to fill in a date, right?
This is a draft contract template.
Okay.
For them to see what they will be entering into. No dates, no information.
Okay.
It's just a template.
Okay.
So debarmant, I think, is okay for this, because debarmant, debarmant is, means taking away a right or privilege. They're not specifically talking about a lawyer getting disbarred from the bar.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to look that up.
Under, Ed, under the sample contract on the signature page?
Yeah.
Bradley's title. I think he's permanent, we're, we're stuck with him.
Yeah. Time to come.
Which probably means it's the same in the supplement S.
Correct.
Okay.
Good, good eagle eyes, people. All right.
And then I have one other question.
One reference to board or selectmen, just so you know, under 15. You wanna change that to select board?
What?
On number 15, under the contract. Contract and general conditions under 15, it just says board or selectmen.
I think he plants one of those in there every time, just to see if he catches it.
Just to see if you're good.
Absolutely. And then, another one on the certificate of non collusion. We've got City of Waltham again.
It says city officials in that one, too.
On corporation identification, can we say state incorporated instead of incorporated in what state?
What's that?
Where's that one?
On the form. Corporate, corporation identification.
Corporate identification.
The first line is incorporated in what state? Just write state of incorporation.
Because we're like asking a question here. It's just awkward.
So on the corporate ID, yeah?
There you go, find it. Ah, there it is.
Yep. So you're suggesting just saying state of incorporation?
Yes.
Other than incorporated in what state, the very first couple lines up top.
You want it to say what state of incorporation?
Yeah.
No, not what state of incorporation, just state of incorporation.
Blank. And then they fill it up. And then a blank.
Mm-hmm. And a blank, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? We've, we've done a lot of these, any...
I've got one other question for you. Find it again. Under Town of Southampton, Massachusetts, request for proposals, annual independent audit services. On the page that looks like that. Currently, it reads, procedures under this invitation require a separate and confidential submission of pricing and a separate submission of technical proposal. The Office of the Town Administrator, along with the Town Accountant, Treasurer Collector will evaluate technical proposals without knowledge of prices. Would one of you... Members of the Select Board also like to evaluate a proposal?
Yes.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Do we have any volunteers?
I think we just had one.
I nominate John.
And I'll second.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good.
I'll make a motion to approve the requested... Request for Proposals, RFP 23-004, in contract agreement for annual independent audit services for fiscal years ending 2022 through 2024, as amended on the floor. Be released and sent out as soon as possible.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you all very much, I appreciate that.
Get approved. Thank you.
And your help.
All righty. Moving along, the bylaw draft, there's just a small change there, the marking of town-owned vehicles. You know, the bylaw committee had looked at this, and then, Ed, you made one other...
Yes.
Small change to this.
So I will, as soon as I get to it, I'll tell you what I did.
I have it, I can read it.
I have it, too, yeah.
Can we just read it?
Go ahead.
What the heck did she put in?
So basically, the, the marking, so we had said the... The town seal and the name of the department on both sides of the vehicle. Police Department and Fire EMS Department vehicles may substitute the police badge or fire Maltese cross in place of the town seal.
Right.
That was the change that was made, so...
So it allows those two departments, which currently are using the police badge and the fire Maltese cross, to use that if they wish as a substitute for the town seal. It does not allow any other department to come up with any alternative.
Mm-hmm. And it's, it still will say Town of Southampton on it somewhere, right?
Correct.
In, in addition, even if the seal is not there, the name will be there, so... Anybody have any objections to that? That was a slight objection.
I thought it was...
Very clear, I think.
Well, yeah.
Yep. Do we need to... We, we kind of already looked at these...
Yes.
Bylaws, I think they're, bylaw committee had moved them on to Ed for passing on to the general, to the local council.
In that writing to be sent along to the...
Okay, can we have a motion?
Motion to approve the marking of town-owned vehicles, bylaw proposal, and for verbiage to be forwarded on to...
KP Law.
KP, KP Law.
Okay, a second, please.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, okay. Greenway Design, On Call Engineering, tie-in bond.
Where did you come up with that?
I don't know, it's on the agenda.
New agenda.
I'm looking at it saying...
Yeah, it should actually be a little more specific and say Greenway. The vehicle, actually, the Greenway Committee and the Ed Hock Technology Committee have been kind of following a similar path, but Greenway Committee has met twice in the last three weeks with this on their, main topic on their agenda, because I asked them... Because I had pulled some individual members of vendors that they would be comfortable seeing do the design of our Greenway. So I had asked them if by any chance... They'd be comfortable, since one of the vendors that some of them had listed was on our On Call Engineering Service, if they would be comfortable... With moving this forward under tie-in bond on the On Call Engineering Service, which would mean that I would take the scope of work that they have developed, send it along to tie-in bond, and say, okay, we would like to engage you under the On Call Engineering Service to do the design work, here's the, here's the scope of the work. Please give us a proposal back under our contract for that, so... I'm getting a little anxious for the timeframe for the grant we have to start the design process here, so I would like to move it along. Like I say, they have not been able to take a formal vote. Individually, I know that they are comfortable utilizing tie-in bond for the design service on the Greenway, so I thought I'd short-circuit the process and bring my recommendation along to the Select Board and ask for your permission to send this law, this scope of work along to tie-in bond and to enter into the design work for the Greenway under our On Call Engineering Services contract with them.
Any discussion, any comments about that? So basically, Greenway hasn't been able to have a quorum each time they've met, even though this is...
Officially voted, correct.
To vote on it. Yeah. And we do need to, I mean, we're hoping that by, well, hopefully in another month-ish... By, by end of November, we should have the right-of-way acquired.
Well, the end of December, we should actually have the acquisition. One of, one of the, one of the two reasons that we entered into the license agreement with the railroad for access to the right-of-way, one was for... The vendor or contractor for conservation for the Man-Handed Meadows Trail Restoration and the storage of their materials there. The other was to actually have access for the design firm to get out there and start their work.
Right.
So we need somebody soon.
Yeah, well, we...
Creative time is October 1 to December 31, correct?
Right, and I would like the design firm to start before January 1st, when we actually acquire the right-of-way.
Right.
Because of time constraints.
We already have the grant for the 300,000.
Yes.
To start that design work, so that would be the rationale, and this is a prime example of why this on-call process that we've gone through, I think, can be very beneficial to us, because we don't have to go back out now for yet another set of bidding.
Correct.
Tie-in Bond has had experience doing this kind of work, and I think they would be more than capable.
In fact, they were, they were the firm that did the...
Culverts.
Culvert and Bridge assessment for the town back in, I think, 2015 or 16.
I'll make a motion to engage Tie-in Bond under the On Call Engineering Contract to design the Greenway.
But we're authorizing Ed to do it.
We're authorizing Ed to do it, right. Okay. Can I have a second, Maureen?
Second.
I'll second.
I think I heard Joy.
Oh.
Okay.
Second by Joy.
I'll be more loud.
All right, and, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right.
Thank you, very much.
That helps a lot.
One that you'll like. The additional liquor license? For, we have a restrictive language issue?
Yeah, which I asked them specifically what, what it was. I have an idea, although Ethan has not gotten from, from Representative Pease's office, hasn't gotten back to me specifically, but I believe that because of the fact that we actually named the business, we would be giving this to... That is why they're considering this... As a restrictive, so the original, the original language to the first committee was very open-ended, just like an additional liquor license, and if the business we gave it to decided they didn't want it anymore, or went out of business, that license would basically stay on our books and still be eligible to go to another business. The new language, which is, yes, substantially more restrictive, that is in the House, and they actually, because of that need a vote of the Select Board to accept it, basically says if Huze's ever gave up that license, went out of business, what have you, that that license would leave Southampton and basically dissipate. So... That's where we are, it's a question of, okay, do we want to accept that, or do we want to...
What are the repercussions of that? So let's say we approve the more general language without identifying... What is stopping any other place in town from applying for that?
Correct.
What is the process that would, that they would go through? Would it still be subject to our approval? Or do they apply directly to the state?
Oh, no, it would still be subject to our approval. I mean, on, on the flip side, we did put it in front of the town meeting that that is the specific place that was gonna get this license, but...
Is that a problem?
I mean, it's only, and I didn't really envision this in my own mind, so... I incorrectly assumed that, okay, if they came to a point where they didn't want that license anymore, went out of business, you know, what have you, that we would have that additional license if somebody else were to come into the town and want another all-alcohol license to...
But are we sure that this...
Give to somebody else.
I mean, the way I'm reading B, the licensing authority shall not approve the transfer of a license granted pursuant to this act to any other location, but it may grant the license to a new applicant at the same location.
Right, yeah.
If the applicant files with the licensing authority, so...
So, I mean, it, it could, if, yes, if somebody came in and wanted to go back to that same location, yes, but if...
That location.
But, yes, but if someone came in and say, okay, wanted to open up an alcohol, alcohol, not serve on-premise license, and have that in the old People's Building or the Harley-Davidson Building?
Yeah.
No.
That wouldn't work, okay, got it. Okay, so they're asking us, because this is what's before the House already, this is the language...
This is the amended language that came out of that.
That came out of the House, or whatever, yeah, out of the committee.
We want a motion to support 5223?
I guess so.
I think so.
I'll make a motion to support the revised House version number 5223.
All right. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Francine's second, okay. Any questions, further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, hearing no opposition, we're in agreement.
Who seconded it?
Francine.
Francine. All right, any other business that can't wait until the next meeting?
And I'll let you know, the follow-up is, I... We have to, we have to get a certified copy of the minutes of this vote from Lucy, so I'm gonna, I will draft up something from this meeting fairly quickly, rather than waiting for the regular meetings, at least for this particular action.
Right, okay. Okay, any other business that can't wait? I don't think I heard no of any offhand. All right, old business, just briefly, COVID update? Anything to report?
We're good.
East Street Bridge, we've seen lots of great photos.
Well, let me get into the details and...
Not too many details, we know.
Except I'm gonna have to do something with the website update, so we might as well chat about it. I have not seen the actual punch list yet, it was supposed to be out today. I did talk with our engineering firm, VHB, about it today, and there are more issues out there than just the milling and final paving, which we are all, whether it happens to be MIG or US, under the mercy of Palmer Paving as a subcontractor at this point in time, so, I mean, they, they found issues with the material and the expansion joints that didn't go all the way that it should be, which is gonna have to get addressed. They did find some issues with the bolts on the side railings that I had mentioned, not the size of them, but basically, they had not anchored it down into the actual foundation of the bridge, so the way it's anchored now, if someone hit it, it, and then would just go off into the river, so those have to be addressed before the bridge could be certified and the bridge could be open, but those are all gonna have to be addressed, but...
Is it gonna be open this calendar year?
Yes. Will it, will it, in my opinion, is it gonna be open in November? Is it gonna be open on October 3rd? No. I am, I am waiting for the punch list, and I am waiting for the definitive answer from MIG of when Palmer Paving is going to give them an actual definitive milling and paving.
Paving date.
Date.
Because we are getting close to when the plants are gonna shut down.
Probably mid-November.
Well, the way we work around here, that's pretty close.
Well, like I say, I'm still anticipating this to open up in October, but not on October 3rd, so I do have to do something to update the website, I'm just hoping to get something back from MIG with a... And, and it's hard, because, you know, I, I will say, much like I had when I sent out the emails, is... You know, the foreman that was there said that Palmer Paving had given them October 3rd for a mill and final code of paving date. Our Highway Superintendent, Randall Kemp, called his contact at Palmer Paving to see if he had any weight to try to get it done sooner. The bad news from that phone call was the individual confirmed they had given MIG a tentative day... a tentative date of October 3, but also told Randall that due to their workload and the amount of rain that we've had recently that's pushing everything off, that probably the October 3 date would get pushed off also. So I will be updating the website. I do anticipate it will open October, I just don't know when, and as soon as I've got that date, that'll be part of the website.
That's fine. Go ahead, no.
What was the issue with the sidewalk?
What's that?
What was the issue with the sidewalk?
We were trying to get away from a sidewalk on the bridge anyway, but, okay, you've got the sidewalk that comes with the bridge. At a point when East Street is actually designed and constructed, it will have sidewalks on it that will meet it. Right now, we don't have sidewalks there, so you, basically what they had done was you've got a sidewalk that is this level for, I don't know, 24 feet, 30 feet, whatever, and at the two ends with the curbing, they had tapered it down to the ground level, but that was just for the curbing. They hadn't done anything, you know, so, and Randall had, and I had looked at it the day before, and we both looked at each other, so one of our questions was, what's going to be done there? Is it missing concrete that's going to taper down or what? And, you know, we got the response that, no, that at some, at some point, right now it's just going to transition to the dirt, you know, at some point when the actual construction on East Street is done, a sidewalk will come up and actually meet it. So for now, yes, they know that they have to bring in dirt material and-
Yeah, it drops off too much.
Right, and just taper those two ends down to match the curbing that tapers-
Right.
Down currently, so-
It drops off not only down this way, but down towards the river.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think if nothing else, I mean, it's a disappointment to not be able to honor the October 3 date, but hopefully it won't delay too long, and I think it, it does show the value, though, in a contract of this complexity and construction contracts in general, to have a quality control contractor on top.
Oh, absolutely.
If we had not had VHB, we wouldn't have even figured out half of these issues, so just lessons learned.
And one of the, one of the other issues is, the water main is now under the bridge. That was insulated, but they had added some, they needed to add some couplings to it. Randall and I were under the bridge, as you saw from the photos, but if you look, you'll, basically the water main runs on or along, it's insulated as it goes along. I can't remember if there's two or three couplings under there, but part of that addition was they got insulated, so that insulation is a wider, bigger piece, because the coupler's wider and bigger than the line, it's the water line, main itself. However, if you look basically at where this insulation meets this insulation, you can see through, which means that air and cold can get in there, and it would be a freeze point, so they have to get back under there and somehow seal those-
Right.
-different sized insulations up.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for that update.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the photos.
Wish I had better-
Well, it's okay news, it's not drastic news. All right, and I think we've, we know what you're doing on the voice-over IP, you've talked about the spectrum coming in and upgrading stuff, so we're hoping on that.
Yes, and what I have shot off to TPX is, would the, by their schedule, are they able to do the installation on October 11? Which just means they come in and they, they would install the phones, it doesn't mean they work, they'll sit there in addition to the current phones that we have, which are working, and ask them if, by their schedule, if they can accommodate doing the training on Wednesday, the 12th, and then porting over so we can use the new phones later in the day on October 12, and I'm waiting to hear the, back on the answer of that.
Okay, sounds great. All right, good enough. Let us move on to signatures. We have a number of-
Madam Chair, can we take up as a package? Resignations, page numbers 123 through 131, the first nine.
First nine.
That is all PCFs, resignation of Megan Pike, resignation of John Ferraro, resignation of Drew Nowwinski, resignation of Zachary Kahita-
Karita.
Jessica Knoll, Colin Dearborn, Michael Fair, Amora O'Neil, Richard Aldrich, all resignations due to either personal reasons or not actually filling a shift since January 1 of this year.
Okay. We have a motion for those nine?
I move to accept the resignations of the aforementioned people.
All right.
Effective-
Immediate.
Trying to see whatever the date.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is that a second?
12, oh no, it's not there.
There, there-
All right, just without the date.
Okay.
Yeah, Francine seconded.
Okay, we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the next two, which are separations, PCFs, fire department, Brandon Lapierre and Gideon-
Touche.
Touche, we got to get some simpler names. These two individuals are separations because they were appointed but never served.
These are all under the fire NMS, just to be clear.
Long period of time, so therefore they're just being cut from the rolls.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Who seconded it?
Francine.
Seconding it, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the next four, which are adjustments in compensation or increases based on certificates earned, or, actually, wait a minute. These are, these are rehires, or new people coming on. Zachariah Migda, part-time, non-benefited, as-needed firefighter slash paramedic at 2725 per hour. Trevor Zronkin, part-time, non-benefited, as-needed EMTB, 1918 per hour. Benjamin Lab, part-time, non-benefited, as-needed EMTB, 1886 per hour. Jack Bax, Bax, part-time, non-benefited, as-needed EMTB, 1692 per hour. They're all as-needed, on-call, no benefits.
You said these are rehires?
Well, the first one I looked at is, he was here a while ago, now he's coming back. But they're all just going to fill shifts as needed.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, well, one of them's missing an address, the Sfunkin, or just FYI.
The Sfunkin, Trevor Sfunkin, there's no address on him, on his-
But the other thing I was asking about-
On his sheet.
I see.
See the-
No, I'm fine.
Yeah, that was the only thing I had noticed, too, was that was missing. Okay.
All right, done.
All those in favor, I think we have a motion, a second? Yep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next.
The, the next three, we can take them up, it's because each one of them has obtained a certification, which, under the pay scale, gives them an additional stipend, I will call it. And that is Nathan-
Udro.
Udro, part-time, non-benefited, as-needed firefighter, on-call, Hampshire certification, 1531 per hour. And Brandon Belice, part-time, non-benefited, as-needed probation firefighter, Hampshire 6, 1504 per hour. Shane Gilbert, part-time, non-benefited, as-needed probation firefighter slash EMTB slash Hampshire 6, 1776 per hour.
And do we have these in our package?
No, we don't.
I don't think we have them.
The online one.
We don't have the three of those in our packages.
The last three we don't have.
They were in the online version, okay.
I have a question.
I would, I would keep going, because they're in mine as I go farther back.
Okay.
They have the certificates, and those three have-
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Oh, here, yeah.
You're right, I'm sorry. Yep, far back.
After the water department. So I have a question, so these are wage adjustments because of additional certification. The dates on the certification are all 2021. So when, when is, when are these changes effective, and has there been any work since?
So they are, if you look on their individual sheets, under the retro calculation, which is next to the proposed status-
Yeah.
71 through 92022, 90 hours, 50 cents per hour, so $45 retro. I'm looking at Nathan's.
Is that because it wasn't picked up, that they had certified and-
Well, they got, they just never did the paperwork to go through-
Okay.
To get it, and now-
Okay, but it was definitely this fiscal year?
Yeah, I mean, because these certificates go back to April and December of 21.
They're all 2021.
I didn't ask, we didn't ask for the supporting documents under the retro calculation.
Okay.
We're just going by the dates that are there.
Well, it says starting 71, so even though their certificate goes back to 2021-
Retro only applies to this year.
Retro only applies to this fiscal year? Well, if that's the case, then that's, okay.
Yeah, okay, the 90 hours for Udro and-
2650 for-
For Blaze.
And $6.50 for Shane.
For Gilbert, oh, okay, yeah, retro active only to July 1, okay, that makes sense, I guess. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further questions, discussion? If not, could we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Next, we have the resignation of Tyler Cristal.
All right.
Why is it that names? Yep.
Yeah.
Resigned effective-
He's the mechanic-
In a, yep.
In the highway department, switching departments now? Okay. So last day of working already was September 9?
Correct.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
I, I, I guess I didn't catch this early on, so, so he's all done as a mechanic, but we're bringing him back as a plow driver?
He's an on-call-
That's another PRF.
On-call plow driver, apparently, yeah.
I also wanted to comment about something on the resignation, I'm not sure why it's here, but it says, he has requested two days of vacation to be paid out. Is that why the additional documentation was provided on this? Adam, just want if you could explain that, or somebody can?
Correct, because of the period in time he had earned the two days of vacation time to be paid out.
Okay, but, so the 90 days of probation doesn't matter? You still accrue vacation day even when you're in probation?
I can't quote PPP, but as generally, you get to accrue it while you're going, you just can't take it, but vacation is the one bucket that generally has to be paid out.
Correct.
Separation.
Well, he, he was hired in May, though.
Yeah, I was going to say, he was here longer than 90 days.
Okay, because I'm looking at the 90-day probation, it says 91922.
Yeah, but that was, that, maybe that was, I don't know if that was the end of it, but overall, the date of hire is 523, so-
Okay.
His 90 days was May to June, June to July, it went to August at least.
August 23.
August, he would have finished his probation, he had just made it.
That's what I was confused about, why does it say 90-day probation, 91922 then?
Yeah, I don't know why the date's there. I mean, that was his, his day to, no, that wasn't his-
So, Ed, did you send out this document that had the details about this?
No, that would be Randall.
Because his last day was on the 9th, so I don't know why-
Okay.
So he didn't, he did, the way this goes, right, he doesn't have any time in, in June, he had a day-
I just wasn't sure why on the bottom it says balance 40, balance 40, I mean-
Weird.
There's a separate document, this one?
This, this thing here?
Oh, the worksheet, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, why does it say balance 40?
Because on, on July 1, you get all your time, right, so he, he got the 40 hours on July 1.
But you can't take it all because, based on what's on the right, correct?
Correct, but you start accruing it.
Okay.
And then he's past his 90 days.
All right, so by August 3, he's allowed two days of vacation, and then by August 3, he's allowed two days of sick time.
Right, but we don't pay out sick time.
But then out here, it says 81922, he took four days of personal, four hours of personal? I don't know, I don't think it's that clear, but if he, if he's already past his probation, then that's fine, I was just going on the fact that he looks like, according to this handout, that he actually left before his probation, apparently. It doesn't sound like it, though, if his hire date is 523.
No, I think he's fine in terms of the, the length of time. The question is a little bit confusing in terms of days allowed there, and then under the, the other chart, where it says personal 32 and then a minus four, one would assume that was-
Hours.
Hours rather than days, but I don't-
Yep.
Right?
Did really say this, because I wasn't sure I heard it?
Uh-huh.
The 90-day probation was 919? That's what's on the document here.
But he's, it's not, he started on May 23, so it ended, probation time ended in August.
Oh, so, yeah, he was ahead of the game a few days, okay.
Yeah, so, okay, I think we're okay, yeah? Anybody?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor to accept the resignation and to-
Do we actually have a second on that one?
Do we even have a motion?
I think we-
We had a motion.
I'll second.
Start over again? We have a motion, I think, to, to accept the resignation. Somebody must have seconded it.
I'll second.
Okay, Joy will second that one, all right. Do we need to say anything about the leave part, or is that?
Aye, no.
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All right, Mr.-
Now, there's a PCF to appoint Tyler, as a plow truck driver on-call as-needed during storms at $30 per hour. He does have a CDL license. Part-time, non-benefited.
Because he has a CDL license, okay.
Correct.
Okay. So, John, you making a motion?
Sure, motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Francine's second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Under the library, the first item, the select board already took up, the PPP just agreed with you. So we have Joanne Douglas interim director, $25 per hour, and this is a temporary 12-week, not-to-exceed 12-week benefit-eligible, full-time slash emergency appointment.
Well, as the emergency, it's only two weeks, right? Or is this the interim?
Let me flip the page.
The temporary?
Yep, temporary benefit-eligible.
Yes.
Temporary interim director, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Interim director.
Correct. Temp, it says temporary interim director.
It's, it's interim. Temporary is hiring from the outside to fill out one of these.
I'm just reading what's on the agenda. Good, so, so correct, so it's the interim director?
Yep. Motion to approve.
Yes, that's right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're already done, please, so that brings us to the wire department. First one on the wire department, PCF for Dycynical Water Tech, 2% merit increase, new rate $30.39, effective 9/24/2022.
How does one determine merit increases?
Based on a satisfactory evaluation. That's according to the personnel policies.
Yes.
And do we have devaluation in here?
Do we know that an evaluation was done? We don't have a copy, obviously.
Evaluation was not provided.
Should we not see that? Or somebody see it? PQB, at least?
Did you see the evaluation?
We did not, but, but Chris asked if we should.
I'm wondering.
What's been done in the past?
I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't recall too many merit increases personally.
I probably only recall one other one, and it was, or two other ones, and it was for water department employees.
And did evaluations come through?
I think we had a commitment that it was based on a satisfactory evaluation, I don't think-
We've got a sure-
We've got assurances that it was based on a satisfactory evaluation. Because that's what the policy says.
And you only need to be satisfactory, not outstanding or something?
I would hope that, I would expect that this was filled out, the PCF was filled out by the department head, that it would actually say something to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, it's not just based on your anniver- it says based on performance slash anniversary.
Well, it says based on performance slash anniversary, so I think.
It's either.
I'm curious to know, I mean, this has nothing to do with it really, but was this employee, remember when all the adjustments were made? Did this person get an adjustment above and beyond the two percent?
That kind of popped into my mind also.
I mean, some of it.
I mean, it's separate, it has to be separate, I mean, it's, but I'm just curious to know whether. I could show you, I, I probably have it here somewhere.
But a two percent based on anniversary would not, that would be your normal step, right? It wouldn't be your, because of merit.
If, if all the employees got two percent, so it's above and beyond cost of living.
Yeah, none, none of these really have steps.
Okay. All right.
We need help with HR.
We need help with HR, exactly. All right, so, this is what's being told to us, that we have a merit increase request for two percent. Any further discussion? If not, I'll have a motion. I mean, I don't know what, if we should require a, you know, just a statement from the supervisor saying, yes, I've completed his evaluation or something, a written evaluation, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's definitely a loophole that needs to be closed whenever we get our HR people on board.
Yes.
Well, I guess what I'm confused, is it just based, I mean, if it was just based on anniversary, then I don't think evaluation matters, but if it's based on?
Well, there's nothing in place to get an increase on the anniversary. This is not a union contract.
So then we need to see, then, yeah, I don't know, was an evaluation done?
I mean, I guess I would like to at least find out that an evaluation was done.
So why don't we table it? And then I can ask the question if you want, or, you know, as PPP, go back and ask the question.
I don't know that we need to have a copy, but at least to have an assurance from the supervisor that a written evaluation is on file for this person.
Yeah, if we're giving.
I mean, it's for the person as well, I mean, in terms of his own personnel records, I mean, one would think he would.
So if we, we'll ta- we'll table that. So the next is a PCF for Robin Richard, admin assistant, part-time benefited, at a rate of nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents. This is an increase in the number of weekly hours by five to be charged to the wire department for additional administrative hours at the wire department, not to exceed five hours per week, which.
No, she's already divvied up between highway and transfer.
Twenty-five at highway, five at transfer, so that's thirty, so this gets her to thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
So no longer doing anything in treasurer?
Yeah, correct. I don't think she has been for a while.
Have they, have they had anybody over at the water department all this time, or how have they covered this?
They used to use the administrative assistant in the highway department.
Right. That was five hours, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Aren't some hours in the treasurer's office also applied to the water department?
Only in indirect costs.
Water billing.
The billing.
Indirect costs.
Right.
Okay.
So is this all according to protocol, that the water department can just create position mid-year because they're an enterprise fund when some other department wouldn't be able to do that necessarily? Or can any department head do it? We just heard from another department head tonight that is choosing to do that? So long it's in their budget and they're not going?
I think that's the key, right? They're adding to the budget without increasing FTE count or benefits. So, so if they, they have to have the money in their budget somewhere in there to do it.
Right, yeah, right.
So we have it budgeted for, right? I mean, technically.
This, this one's a tough one. Only because of the fact that, okay, they're basically using the individual that's in the position that they've always utilized. It would, it would be a much tougher one, which I know they went down the road a couple of years ago and then didn't end up filling it if they did this and then tried and then wanted to hire a different individual.
Well, they should be doing a PRF and advertising this position. They can't just handpick somebody. Right? Here's the point.
I'm trying to remember if they did a PRF for this.
No, this is the first time I've seen this.
The water department.
This is the first, yeah, this is the first I've seen it.
Then it would have required, in my opinion, a PRF?
Well, yes, without knowing the history, though, much like the on-call station attendant, the transfer station, there is a PRF out there that's been approved for like ten years that we're still working under because nothing has changed in its body.
And that they, and on the flip side, did they just decide to go back and utilize the individual that, or the position that they had?
Had always used.
Previously, but knew that, okay, that's additional hours on that individual that not, are not accounted on that individual's PCF.
That's what we have. So if it's not on her PCF, does she get, how does it happen when she puts in her payroll for thirty-five hours?
She hasn't yet.
I know, but when she does.
That's what they're asking to do.
Yeah.
I mean, nor- normally?
Yeah.
What this would have been done was back in, you know, the budget season or whatever, let's say there was no discontinuance of the use. When the highway superintendent would have hired this individual, the piece, the, would have, PRF duties would have been also, in addition to the transfer station, the water department. And when that original PCF was created, it would have been twenty, twenty-five hours highway, five hours transfer station, five hours water department.
Right. Okay. Well, any, any thoughts?
I still think if you're creating a new position, you need to create a PRF and hire the way everybody else hires.
Well, I can't imagine hiring outside of an existing person within the town employ already.
And she's already doing the job.
Who's gonna apply a job?
Increasing her hours.
Yeah, who's gonna apply for a job for only five hours? I mean, you'd end up having to take somebody within a town department, I would think.
Volunteer coordinating the scene center. I'm just saying, do we have a protocol for how this is supposed to happen? Or people just filling out a form for the sake of like increasing and earmarking the hours with somebody? I just thought we had rules that we have to follow around when there are new positions.
Well, and I guess, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, they're not considering this a new position because they've always had the person from the highway department fill that position. They've just had a gap now for whatever reason, right? For X numbers of months, which they haven't felt the need to fill the position over there, apparently, or something. But they were using the person that used to be at the highway department to fill that need, from what I thought Ed said. It's been the shared person in the past. So it's, it's not like they're, it sounds like they're not thinking of it as a new position, but rather picking up.
Well, I think there's been a little bit of, they're outside the operating budget and just do things as they feel they need to, and I think we have to decide whether or not that's okay or not.
Okay, well, we've asked on the separate, now, we've asked for a special meeting on, on the, with the water department.
And finance.
We could take it up whenever we meet them. We could hold this as well and, and ask them when we meet with them about that. All right? So unless I hear otherwise, shall we table this?
Sure.
So we get more information and ask if they, I mean, just clarify if they should not do a PRF. I'm hearing two voices say yes, probably, at least. Okay?
So next, we have a PRF for the health agent, part-time, non-benefited, ten hours per week.
This is replacement for Nicole, right?
Yes. A job posting was submitted with the PRF.
Okay.
With no changes from the previous one that was on file.
Okay.
This was approved and moved for finance and select board consideration.
Okay.
So I have a question, yeah. So it looks like required, so this tells me that the requirements of a health agent at a minimum are the soil evaluator certification and serve safe. Is that, do you know if that's true, Francine? That those are the minimum? That's not all that much, and I know Jerry already has serve safe, so. I'm just looking ahead, because I know they have a vendor. The question I had really was about the hours. So it says part-time, ten hours per week. If I remember correctly, Nicole was being asked to go out to Burke Test here, there, and everywhere. So this is not on-call. This is strictly ten hours per week. So it doesn't matter what hours. It's non-benefited, so there's no expectation that it's any particular hours, correct? You know, I'm, I'm trying to look that up.
In terms of a regular schedule?
Has, has, yeah.
In terms of a regular schedule, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, I think if, I think one of the problems that she had was people would literally stop over at the farm and ask her to go out and do certain things. And so I want to be clear with any applicant that it's ten regular hours per week, or it's ten flex hours per week, or it's on-call hours. Because I certainly wouldn't want for ten hours a week for anybody to think that they have to be available forty, but they'll be expected to work ten. So if that's the case, I mean.
So it'd be establishing the actual hours when?
Right.
She would be on duty.
It doesn't have to hold this up. I just, that was a question for Francine, I guess, to bring to them.
Yeah.
Are we posting it accurately so that we're not gonna get people interested and then find out that the expectation is more availability than what they're saying?
Okay. All right, we may not have the answer to that, but are we?
I'm looking now, and let me just see, no.
But I think we have the job posting that's clear in terms of?
Just let me tell you, anytime I put anything in about a health agent, it's an application for a job.
Yeah, so don't.
Because they're so short, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have a request for the, for the PRF on this, right, to be able to post this? So we might just clarify one, one thing in terms of the wording as it gets finally posted, but we essentially have the?
Yes.
The wherewithal of the language that we need here. So could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so be it. So we will just clarify what is meant by the hours and just have them maybe mention a?
All right, they have a meeting on Monday, and so.
Just maybe bring it up.
I'll, I'll clarify that.
Or just, you know, the, the posting is clear so that anybody who applies is not under a misconception of what the job entails. Okay, next, we have a one-day beer and wine permit for Conant Park on October twenty-second from ten to, eh, sorry, ten AM to eight PM for Rebecca Bassett from East Hampton. All the paperwork looks like it's here and, like I can tell. Could I have a motion to approve, unless there's any questions?
So moved.
I'll second.
Joy moved, Francine's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so approved.
It's another out-of-town applicant?
Yup.
Yeah.
I wonder if Mark and Paul are aware of that. I mean, I'm not, it's just that we have.
Hope so, because they charge a higher fee.
I know, but it's not that much higher. And it's much less than on a talk, I'll tell you that. I'm just wondering if they're kind of aware that almost all the applications are out of town residents.
There's a lot of them, sure, yeah. Okay, Francine, have a warrants?
Okay, payroll warrant, twenty-three dash eleven A for four hundred sixteen dollars and seventy cents. Payroll deduction warrant, twenty-three dash eleven A for sixty-two dollars and sixty cents. Payroll deduction warrant, twenty-three dash seven A for a hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Payroll warrant, twenty-three dash nine for three hundred and four thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Payroll deduction, twenty-three dash nine for fifty thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-two cents. And vendor warrant, twenty-three dash ten for fifty-six thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
Okay.
I?
Anybody have any questions on the warrants?
I do.
I have a question, too.
I have a question on warrant P twenty-three dash nine.
Yeah, me too.
The payroll warrant for three hundred and four thousand and change. So I don't want to, I don't want to mention names, but there's an individual on there that I believe is out right now. So we're, I'm gonna tell you, we're self-funded for that coverage.
You gotta give me something.
Isn't, out of that list of five people, isn't that middle name on disability leave?
Are we on page, page six?
No, page nine.
Page nine.
Sorry, it's on the last, above the signature, page nine.
The total account number.
It is.
Right?
Nine is?
Isn't that person out?
Yeah, so?
So my question is, the wages are being charged to the transfer station, but shouldn't we track that under a separate code so we know how much we actually spend on self-funded disability?
We do not have any separate codes set up, approved for budget.
Well, that's an oversight.
And I would not want to deficit spend at all.
Well, no, but you wanna be, I mean, the whole purpose of self-funding is you can run one quick report and say, hey, this is how much we spent, here's the premium, we're saving money, or we're actually spending twice what we would have if we were fully insured, right? If that exercise ever actually happens. I can bring it up to the cost efficiency committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we've never had.
Seems like we've approved like three since I've been here.
Yeah, but we've, we've never had, had an issue with being able to identify those costs.
Okay.
Yeah, associated with that. I'm good.
Okay.
I have three questions.
I do see your point.
I have three questions. In and amongst the warrants is a piece of paper that said packet number eight nineteen, and it was a employee that received premium pay. It was, yes, do people get that?
Yup.
And so the question is, was this person missed?
No, I believe that's a year-to-date, so if we go back to when we actually issued the premium pay.
Yeah.
It was within, because it's under the year-to-date cap.
Why is it in here?
Well, that's a copy of their stuff showing.
So I'm just wondering, why, why do we get this?
I believe that's to justify the taxes. It's the backup for the payroll taxes. For this one here.
What's the warrant number?
Yeah, we don't usually see these, but.
No.
This is also a special check. That got, this person got missed off the whole payroll.
I, I think that, I think that was the issue.
I don't believe it was missed. I believe it was actually.
The timesheet not submitted, or?
Lost check in that cash.
Okay.
Okay, and then in the actual warrants, let me get to the one, I just had a question about the ARPA funds.
What page?
I'm getting, I'm trying to get to it, hang on. Right, on warrant P twenty-three dash nine, and, well, it says page eight. There are four people listed as ARPA wages. I know what the last person is, why that's there. Who are the other three? What's, what employees are they?
Are they not the new hires at the school?
Those are our school, those are our school employees.
They are. So is that the neurodiversity program?
All but one is a school employee.
Okay, so the neurodiverse, that's all I need to know. And the last question is, on the same page, further down, it says Conant Park Pavilion, and there's an individual that received six hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. What is that for?
If they are emptying the trash or cleaning, cleaning up and preparing the pavilion for the rentals, it's charged, that those persons' hours are charged to...
The park commission?
Park commission, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the other, and the other, the three people that she mentioned here under ARPA wages, that's how they're allocated on the school budget. This one.
Because it was funded by the, the neurodiversity program. It was funded by the ARPA. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Next, I think we have a couple of minutes to approve for May eighth, sorry, May eighteenth and May twenty-fourth.
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes, May eighteenth and May twenty-fourth.
Second.
May two.
Okay, no typos, no nothing, okay.
No favor.
Okay. I actually did not see any. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have a question.
You had a question, oh, hold on, hold on. A question?
On the first set of minutes, no, the second one? I just had a question about, where says, McKell's copy?
Should I excuse myself?
No.
I, no, no, well, I don't think you need to, because this is...
This is minutes, so you shouldn't have to.
Well, I don't know if they're gonna discuss it.
This is on the May twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
On page?
When asked what the money would be used for. I'm on page two of five of the minutes. The page starts on the top with meeting due to members' work schedules. We talked about McKell's copy. In the bottom, it says, Mr. Rizzo stated it would help him hire staff and increase hours of operation. I just don't entirely remember that that was the primary reason for the ARPA funds. Wasn't it to digitalize his menu and to provide...
Well, we had, there was a lengthy discussion about it was going to be more treated as a reimbursement. So, if, that was the easiest thing. If you, if you did the payroll, you showed the payroll, then you get back, you get back billed for it, or...
And I didn't recall, I'm sorry, that it was to hire additional staff and increase the hours.
So, that was what he, that, I, that's what I recall. That's all right, okay.
In addition to digitalizing the menu, making outside seating...
The issue with that is he didn't have the quotes for that. That, that was something he wanted to do, but he didn't have the documents, so therefore we didn't have a number in the file.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, thanks.
Yep, okay. So, we have motion on the floor. Did we have a second?
Yep, I did.
Yes.
All right, John seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes are approved, thank you. Anything under the pending items? Old Town Hall, Clearwater, Boundary, E Street tip proposal? Nothing new there, Ed, on pending items? I'm assuming.
Was there something for, on the tip proposal?
What's that?
Was there anything new on the tip proposal?
For E Street, the rest of E Street?
Yes, actually, they're working on that, and I wanted to get them in either in the October, November timeframe to do a presentation. I know the next meeting, we have Ty and Von scheduled to come back in and do an update on the sewer project, so maybe the second meeting in October.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Next select board meetings are October eleven and twenty-five, and I think I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Francine seconded. We are adjourned at about nine fourteen, I'm sorry, ten fourteen.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, yes, we are adjourned.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.